I'd like to call this meeting to order. I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
The move that the Board of Selectmen meet in executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body is authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Paragraph A 6.
And I declare that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body relative to the Board's consideration of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Does your second?
Second.
Is there a roll call, Mr. Capp- Mr. Simoneon?
Yeah, before we take the roll call vote under discussion, I just, um, we've already discussed a large amount of this in front of the public, so I'm just a little kind of, and I spoke to the town manager earlier, she couldn't really give me any answers, but I'm concerned about what we're going to discuss here in pu- in, in, in an executive session and if that's in any way, shape, or form going to handcuff the Board from being able to answer questions, um, from the residents in a public session, because obviously this impacts the entire town, and I don't want to be in a position where we can't, uh, answer questions or, or discuss certain things because they were part of an executive session. I haven't read through all the 6A information that was given to me and that I researched on my own. I mean, to me, it seems pretty clear cut that it's either a yes or no, so I, I just want to understand to the degree that we can prior to taking this vote, um, why this is necessary, um, without disclosing anything that would hurt us.
Attorney Hennigan, without, obviously you would know better than I.
Madam Chairman, through you, um, Mr. Simoneon and to members of the Board, issued to be discussed, under this Chapter 61A, to exercise your right of first refusal, to exercise that option, you need to submit with the notice of you exercise to exercise that option, a proposed purchase and sale agreement, and it is in that context that the executive session is, is being requested, so that the terms and, and, uh, uh, terms and conditions of a proposed purchase and sale agreement, if the Board was to select, can be discussed and considered in some type of a timely fashion, um, throughout this process. We're still well within the 120-day period, as I've said many times, and we, this is a process now where we have to begin to consider, uh, terms and conditions if, if the, the Board was to exercise that option. There's no discussion going to take place about exercising that option or not, it's going to be solely and concentrated on the terms of a purchase and sale agreement.
And, and by the Board as to, um, if there is something that's brought up in executive session that it's not appropriate for executive session?
I will do that.
Mr. Simoneon?
Through the, through the Chair, Mr. Hennigan, um, I don't know if it was last week or prior to that, but I thought that basically we were told that we would have to honor the terms of the purchase and sales agreement that was already in place, so I'm, I mean, again, I don't want to get into terms that we can't or shouldn't discuss in the public, but I, I don't, I just don't want to limit what we can discuss with the public.
Mr. Holstrom?
I'd like to, uh, through the Chair, uh, to the Board, I'd like to, uh, support the Attorney's, um, suggestion that we enter into executive session to discuss, uh, any details or what have you for, um, what may be upon us. Uh, there are a lot of questions to be answered, but, um, I think he has some suggestions for us tonight to, uh, put this in place, and I would support his suggestion to, uh, go to executive session.
If there's nothing else, this is a roll call vote, Mr. Cappington?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoneon?
No.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. We are adjourned into executive session to come back out and reconvene the public session. I'd like to reconvene the public session for the continued public hearing for October 27th. Tonight is, um, Monday, November 3rd. I'd like to now, since this meeting is being recorded, and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a continuation for, of our public hearing, um, and I am going to, first here from the Town Manager, an update on our last, um, meeting here. We have Town Council present. If you would like to come up to the microphone to make a comment, I would ask that you come up, give your name, spelling your last name for the record, and give your address, please. Due to the, um, number of residents we have here, I'm going to ask that you get up to the microphone and speak once and make sure that we give everyone an opportunity to speak. There is overflow in the other, in the planning board room, they can, um, view the, um, meeting and may come over here to have public comment. So having said that, I'm going to turn the, um, meeting over to the Town Manager right now to give us an update on some of the issues that have come about since the last meeting.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yep. Thank you very much. Just on, uh, one of the first points, I just want to revise the timeline for everybody from what was presented at the last meeting. Uh, there have been some concern raised about a potential special town meeting on November 25th, and as a result, the Board of Selectmen, uh, took a vote at the hearing of the 27th to have a special town meeting on November 18th, so I want to make sure that everybody has that date and that change. So that vote was taken to have a special town meeting, uh, to authorize borrowing or, uh, other sources for potential acquisition. Uh, the notice of that under the law will go out tomorrow. So again, this is a continuation of the public hearing, the other dates remain the same, but I want to make sure everybody had that date. Um, the Board has asked me to look at some of the issues that were raised at their October 27th hearing and respond back, uh, where we can with some additional information. And again, I just want to make it clear on, from the Town Administration, and I speak for the Board as well, that we are all here tonight, that the purpose of the public meeting is to solicit input. It's not to make a decision this evening, uh, the, the Board needs to hear from the residents on all aspects of the issue, that's why they're doing this, that's why they continue the meeting. So if we don't have answers to all of the questions, uh, there may be additional issues that are raised this evening, in which case, I'm certain the Board would continue the hearing, which I believe it's the intent, uh, to continue it, and then to look for additional information if we need to do that. So a couple of the main issues that came up at the last meeting, um, number one was the, uh, I'll just go quickly go through what the issues are, and then we can go through what some of the responses are on it, and then we can go through the agenda and go through, uh, some additional information regarding potential financing. So a, a couple of the issues that were raised, um, there was an option to request, uh, the Board look into 120-day extension from the seller. There were questions regarding whether the town had a vision or a plan for open space acquisition. There were issues raised, uh, quite a few issues rega- raised with regard to, uh, potential traffic impacts from a multifamily residential development. Uh, it was raised whether the town has an option to purchase the 61A land, uh, under the notice, and sell through an RFP, a portion of that to a developer, either with or without roadwork. There were, uh, comments about whether the town could look into an option to RFP, uh, some or all of the land for solar development. There were comments made that the valuations that the town used were, uh, in their assumptions and estimates were incorrect, uh, some had identified Zillow and Trulia as being inconsistent with the numbers that we had from the assessor's office. There, uh, was a question of, for the, uh, town to come back tonight to talk about the financial impact of the purchase on taxpayers, should the Board make that decision with town meeting to go forward. There were discussions on the financial mechanisms for, uh, a proposed purchase, and, uh, a question on why did the town do work on Southhold Road last week, given that it's private? And then a couple of comments made, uh, unfortunately about, um, quote, hired guns that don't care about the town, and the Board needing to tell, uh, Town Administration to find the money to purchase. Those are the, generally some of the major issues that arose last week. So I want to take all of those issues and what we can provide to you, um, but first of all, I just want to say, I, I truly hope, from the administration's standpoint, that tonight we do hear input from the residents, and that we keep personal criticism out of it, because I can tell you from the Town Administration's standpoint, from myself, from everyone on this, on the town staff, and for the Board of Selectmen, we've been working very hard on this for two months, there's a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of questions, a lot of information that we get every day. Um, and to hear comments that we're not thinking this through, we're not doing our homework, we're hiding something, I just want to be perfectly clear, ask questions, please do, but I would ask that everybody keep it respectful, because we do respect all the residents, that's why we're here. Uh, we want to hear from you, we want to hear what your issues are, and we're going to do our best to answer your questions as best we can. Um, as far as finding the money to purchase, absolutely getting a little ahead of it, but if the Board makes a decision that they would like to go forward to look at the options for purchase, we do have that, uh, we have a couple of options to show you, there are several iterations, you could look at it a hundred different ways as to how to, Cindy, if you want, uh, how to fund it. So we will do that, and I just want to assure you, if and when the Board makes their final vote and town meeting makes their final vote, we absolutely will be looking to find, uh, the funds to purchase if that's what the vote is. It's premature to, we can look at our options now, but no vote has been taken yet, so I want to make that clear. No opinions have been made, no vote has been taken, we're just trying to get some information out so everyone can make decisions. And if this does go to town meeting members, your town meeting members are representative of your precinct, so we would suggest and encourage all of you to talk to your town meeting representatives, you voted them in to represent you, and they need to hear from you as to what direction you'd like them to take when it comes to potential purchase. So, uh, let me just go over a couple of things. Again, we're here to solicit input, uh, that the Board needs to hear to make a decision to exercise its right of first refusal under Mass. General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14. Town meeting being the legislative body of the town would also vote on whether or not to fund the acquisition, and that will be discussed tonight too. Again, I don't believe any decisions are being made, this is a hearing to get input. Uh, one of the first things we did after last two, uh, excuse me, Monday's hearing on the 27th, the Board took a vote to ask, uh, Town Administration to ask the seller to extend the 100 and day, 120-day period that we have under the law by another 120 days. There was much discussion that that was allowed to be done under the law. Uh, it had been the recommendation of our Town Council, uh, prior to that, that there was no statutory authority to ask for such an extension. Uh, the Board voted for us to make that request, we did make that request in writing, and the response that we received from the seller was that there would, he would not entertain a 120-day exception, primarily for the reason that there is no statutory authority to do so. Uh, we did receive that in writing, so again, both our Town Council and the attorney for the seller have both concurred that there's no statutory authority to give 120-day extension. That being said, the seller did respond, through his attorney, that he may be willing to entertain an extension on the 90-day, uh, uh, period by which the town would have to purchase the land if they made the decision to go forward. So if, the Board would have to vote to exercise its option, and then, under the law, 90 days, within the 90-day period, they would have to actually close on it. So funds in place, ready to close. That 90-day period is where there's potentially an opportunity for the seller to extend it if the town needed to have more time, but we cannot extend the 120-day period for making a decision on whether or not to exercise the right. Uh, I wanted to just talk a little bit briefly about the vision or plan for open space. Uh, the question came up last week, do we have a plan, and where is it? And the town does have a plan, there was a comprehensive master plan that was done in 2006. Uh, I believe it was a three-year process, it could have even extended almost four years. Several, several, uh, public meetings, document was prepared, uh, it was accepted by the Planning Board, ZBA, it went through all of the appropriate boards and commissions. It is on the town's website, if you're interested, uh, you can just go into the search bar on the town's website and type "master plan," you'll go right to it. Uh, the master plan at that time included a component for an open space plan. It's my understanding that open space plan also had several, uh, hearings and subcommittees to talk about open space, preservation of open space, recreation space. The open space plan was never, uh, formally approved by the state of Massachusetts, so without a formal approval for an open space plan, you can't go forward and apply for grant funding, uh, under various programs in the state. When, uh, in 2011, when we realized this plan had not been approved back in 2005, 2006, we put together, um, an open space committee that is populated by town residents, and that was in 2011, late 2011, and at that time, they started to do open space planning to update the plan that had been done in 2005 slash 2006, to look at it again in the context of different fiscal realities, uh, potentially different priorities of the town. There were several public meetings that were held, and the final draft of that plan was submitted to the state this past June 2014. Uh, that open space plan draft is also on our website, and I would mention that's a draft because it needs to have final approval from the state, and hopefully, once we get final approval from the state, we would then be eligible to apply for certain grants that are funded when you're a participant in that program. Uh, it's an excellent document, it absolutely identifies certain lands that the town at the time and people who attended those meetings wanted to see for preservation, for concern about open space, for concern about conservation, walking trails, there are a lot of goals listed in that plan. So I don't want to take up too much time talking about it, but I did want to respond to the gentleman who was looking for a plan. We, we do have now the master plan and now the updated open space plan, maps are in it, clearly delineates what's Chapter 61A, and there are actually, um, comments on the, in the plan, there is an open space and recreation strategy within it, and it does talk specifically about wanting to proceed with the potential purchase of 61A land, should it become available. Um, there were a number of strategies that were identified, while the plan did not sign for the town and the Board of Selectmen and the town meeting members to revisit what some of the strategies and options are for the town for future open space planning. Uh, finances potentially are, are, have changed since it was looked at in 2005, maybe there's a different take on how to go forward, um, and I can touch on those in a few minutes as well. Uh, there was also a question that was brought up last week about, uh, traffic for multifamily residential development. So, uh, and we, what we mentioned last week is if a developer were to go forward and purchase this, in other words, if the Board waived their right, and I'm not saying whether they are or they aren't, I'm just saying what the option is, if a developer went forward, that developer would be required to do a traffic analysis. Uh, we do have a copy of the traffic analysis that this, uh, developer had done for his project in Holden, which is the reserves on Salisbury. Uh, someone had asked why we were using that project as a comparison, and the quite simple answer is that the developer who came here and presented on October 14th told us that we should look at that project as a comparison. He said it's not going to be identical, he doesn't have all the components put together yet of his plan, uh, so we can only take estimates of what could be here based on what he did in Holden, which is what he was suggesting. So we got a hold of the analysis from the town of Holden on their economic impact analysis, we got a hold of their traffic impact analysis, and we also had our DPW director, uh, utilizing the same multipliers and figures that are used by the, uh, Federal Department of Transportation, came up with some suggested numbers. So I'm going to put these out there, but I just also want to make sure everyone understands, the developer has not specifically told us, um, at the October 14th meeting, how many units there are. We used the number 190 during the estimated impacts, we were asked to estimate impacts, we don't have a plan in front of us, it's not a requirement to have a specific plan put in front of you as part of this 61A process. The requirement is for the seller to notify the town when it intends to sell land under 61A, and to notify them what the use is, and the use is residential development. The developer did, as many of you heard, indicate that he would potentially be looking at multifamily development on the Phase 2 and Phase 3 portions of the land. I believe, uh, one or two of the Board members asked him what type of multifamily housing that could be, and his response was, it could have an affordable housing com- component of 25%. He had also not ruled out, uh, 55 and over housing, but I believe the comment he made at the time was the market right now is not necessarily supportive of 55 and over, that the market had been saturated, but he also made it clear that he, it was premature for him to state that it was completely off the table, he, he did not say that. So for purposes of using the same numbers, just to be consistent, we used the numbers, we, we based it on the Holden model, as the developer suggested we may want to do, so we used the number 190 units. The developer, uh, was asked by a couple of members of the Board, how many one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units that there were going to be, and he said he couldn't tell us yet, he hadn't got that far, but what he could tell us is what Holden had. So we contacted Holden, and I just want to be clear, the numbers we have from Holden were based on his initial proposal of 246 units. Working through an LIP process, which is what they call a so-called Friendly 40B process, he worked, uh, through this LIP, which is local, um, initiative program, to work with the town of Holden to negotiate the type of project they were going to have, as opposed to what some would call a hu- it's called a hostile 40B project, where a developer comes in and just tells the town what they're going to have. He did not do that in Holden. Through the process, he went from a proposal of 246 units down to 192. To make it simple for us, we just said 190 units, based it as best we could on how many three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and one-bedroom he had at the time. Um, it's difficult because we don't have a plan, and that could change, he could only tell us on October 14th that that, it may be similar to that. So if you look at, uh, not only the 190 units of rental units that he potentially may put in, uh, could be more, it could be less, he also mentioned that there would be 25 single-family homes, 21 of which are in Chapter 61A. So looking, uh, I won't go back over the numbers from last week, 'cause, um, I'm sure it is online if you'd like to see it, I just want to add new information tonight so we don't repeat ourselves. Um, the numbers, using the same model that Holden used and using what our GPW uses to do traffic analysis, uh, we would come up with single-family homes at, uh, the industry standard is 10 trips a day, apartments at 6 trips a day. Total trips per day, based on all the analysis, is 1,517 per day. The breakdown of that, uh, is 125 per hour, uh, in the morning hours, peak hours, and 154 per peak hour in the, uh, evening. By comparison, um, traffic analysis for Holden, based on the 246 units, so about 50 more units, uh, which is, you know, quite a bit more than the 190 we're projecting, was very similar. They came back with 1,630 da- daily vehicle trips, 124 of those versus 125 we came up with, uh, for peak hour, and 153 for peak hour PM versus 154 that we came up with. And again, ours is based on 190, and theirs is based on 246, so, um, the, the numbers are very similar. Again, I want to make sure it's clear, the developer has not confirmed the traffic plan, it is our understanding the developer is looking at different options for traffic, he has not made it clear to the town, because I think he doesn't know yet himself, because he's not done with his due diligence, what would be used for access or egress. I also want to make it clear, we, DPW Director, Town Administration, we do have concerns about Curtis Street. Uh, it would be premature for us to tell you how we should work with Curtis Street, but we do have concerns about Curtis Street with that volume of traffic. Um, that being said, we need to work with the developer and see what the developer is proposing, and what areas he's looking at, and what access he's looking at. Um, I would say, one more thing to add to the traffic, and I think I mentioned it, but it's worth repeating, whether the developer goes through an LIP, which is a, uh, non-hostile 40B project, or goes through a 40B project, both of them have a 30-day review period for the local government to look at and any other affected agencies. So during that 30-day review period, once a developer files for a plan, which has not happened at all yet, uh, the traffic impacts would be something we absolutely have to look at. The other question had come up, whether the town has an option to purchase 61A land and sell via an RFP, a portion of that to a developer. We had presented at the time last week, a couple of different options for, uh, offsetting the potential purchase price. Uh, the Board had asked for specific, numbers as specific as we can be, not having a, a plan in front of us, but just what kind of numbers are we looking at, so we could figure out what the exposure would be to the town and what the cost of the land is. We had put forth a couple of different options, and again, there are probably 100 different options, you can sell one parcel, you can sell 34 parcels, you can sell 20 parcels. We showed you options if we were to sell, um, Phase 1 under the plan and Phase 2 under the plan, or doing it separately, uh, because that is the information we had from the developer that potentially would be single-family homes. Um, the question is whether we could look to purchase the entire parcel, which under 61A protected land is approximately 50 acres, around 49 acres, and if the town did that, could they turn around and RFP or sell some of those parcels? The, the clear answer is yes, we did discuss that last week. Uh, the, the question that came up was, would the town have to improve the road to do that? The answer is no, the town does not have to improve the road to do that. Uh, but the reality is, if Southhold Road is not improved, those parcels won't sell for the same market rate that they would sell for if the par- if the road was improved. Uh, we know that the road is, uh, in rough condition, it would be hard to sell parcels on that, on that lot for the maximum market rate value unless there was some work that was done to the road. So could we sell the parcels without doing the road? Yes, we can do that. Uh, what would the value of the parcels be? Uh, you know, we would, we'd have to get an appraisal, all I can tell you is, um, the, the figure that was thrown out last week, and maybe this is the correct figure, we, we don't know that, it was a resident who brought it forth, and again, this is what's good about, uh, public input, was 35 to 30, to $45,000 an acre if the roadway was not upgraded. The cost to upgrade Southhold Road approximately, if we were to look just at Southhold Road, maybe you're talking 850, maybe all the way up to a million dollars. Uh, when we add it in, look, it, it depends on specifics, we're going by linear feet, what needs to be done, if you then were to add in the Phase 2 land, we came up with a figure of 1.2 to 1.5 to invest in that. So if you subtract that out, and you just did a pure sale where the town were to purchase the land, and turn around and sell the parcels, uh, at, let's say, 35 to 45,000, even take the high of 45 that I think had been mentioned, uh, we would probably, if we could sell all of them, be able to come up with 1.7 million. Again, the question that we raised last week, and it's just a question the Board needs to, to be aware of, how long would it take to sell all the parcels? Can all the parcels be sold? And will the value hold if all of the parcels are put out there at once? Uh, just trying to get an idea of what's happened on the land in the past, uh, it's my understanding that the land was being marketed by the, the owner for, uh, at least back to 2004, for Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, for a total of 77 single-family house lots on 60 acres, uh, with the approvals being, uh, marketed as being received for Phase 1 and Phase 2 single-family homes, Phase 3 being for another, I believe, somewhere in the vicinity of another potential 34 single-family homes on Phase 3, should the approvals come in on that. Uh, the parcels had been developed for quite some time, I believe in 2010, there was a marketing site that was put up, a website to, that the seller put up, to show what potentially could be done. It's beautiful land, I mean, we all know, it, the, the views are beautiful. Um, I, there is no price that is given on that website, so I, I don't want to speculate what, what the owner was asking for, that's not right to do that. I could not find anything that said what the land was being sold for, which is a question that we had been asked. Um, I just want to mention the, give me one minute, please. So, so, yes, there are a couple of different options on selling off parcels. We went over two, uh, three of them last week, you could add the fourth one, which would be to sell it as raw land. Um, and again, if we use the gentleman's figures that he came in with, and we'd have to do some more research on that, 1.7 million toward the price. So, yes, that can absolutely be done. Can solar be done? That was the next thing. A couple of different things that we looked at since last week with relation to solar. First of all, um, there's two different options, looking at any type of solar development. There is a, a potential for the town, many towns have done this, put out a lease, to get a solar developer to come in and put in, uh, solar facility, and they would own and operate the solar facility. Some, although very few, communities develop and build their own solar fac- facility. Um, so we did look into both, uh, we've spoken with two solar developers. I would tell you, right now, the town has two net metering credit agreements for a total of 4 megawatts of power that we have committed to purchasing from the two different net metering credit agreements. The, both of these are, uh, one project is a 2 megawatt, the other is a 2 megawatt. Our total usage right now is probably around 5 megawatts. We anticipate that will go a little higher with the, uh, middle school coming online, and there could be some other reasons that the, we need to use more power ourselves, just as, uh, the municipal, the town side, the town buildings, the school buildings. But right now, we're probably at about 90 to 95% capacity, uh, already signed up for, for savings on power, if these projects go through, and that's always an if, because as many communities have seen, a lot of solar projects don't go through, they don't get their SRECs, uh, they don't get their approvals from National Grid, and they can't quite make the numbers work. But we are in two agreements, and we are in constant contact with them, and we hope that this continues to move forward. So I would tell the Board that for the town to purchase the land and then develop their own solar facility would be very costly. First of all, we don't have enough capacity left in what we're not using to offset the costs of the land, so we wouldn't recoup it in the savings, because we've already counted for those savings, you can't count them twice. for those savings, you can't count them twice, we've already looked at those savings. And the investment could be significant for the town. We did have a pilot agreement a couple of years ago. Again, it did not work out with that particular developer, the developer couldn't get their approvals from National Grid. That project was involved in investment of $20 million in equipment. So I don't think the town is looking for us to recommend that the town invest $20 million in equipment, but I put it out there because it was asked, could the town do that? The other option is probably the more feasible option, and certainly more palatable option. The general rule of thumb is for a lease of land, $2 to $2.50 per watt. So an investment into a 3-megawatt system, which is fairly standard, we, like I said, we are in two agreements, each for only 2 megawatts, but even to go a little higher at 3 megawatts, would be between $6 and $7 million, up as high as $10 million. I've spoken to both, two solar developers, one that we already have a contract with and one that we do not, just, he is a consultant on solar, and also our own research in the past, because we've looked into solar. Land is generally not purchased by solar development companies, they generally lease. And the reason for that is they don't want to make a long-term commitment on the purchase of land when they're purchasing equipment that may only have a 20-year lease, or life. So they generally lease. So I think there's probably more, more of a market for a lease than a purchase. We have been told that you need to have Phase 3 power, and right now, there is only Phase 1 power in that area. The closest Phase 3 power is about a quarter of a mile away, if you were to go straight through, and again, that's an issue that National Grid and a developer would have to look at, to connect about a quarter of a mile away. It's not out of the question, it's just, I want to make it clear, the power that's needed isn't immediately on-site. That may or may not make a difference for a developer. If we were to go forward and RFP this, we would be looking for someone in the market to come in and lease a portion of the land for solar. The going rate for leases is approximately $20,000 to $25,000 per megawatt. The industry standard is that you need five acres to produce 1 megawatt of power. So you would get, that translates to somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 per acre for a lease, that the town potentially could get if we were to RFP this. We would need to have a resource map to get information on the site as to whether it's sufficient for solar. We do have one of our solar developers that we contacted offering to come up with that resource map for us. He's looking at the topography, looking at the land, and he's going to get back to us and let us know, based on the resource mapping, if it even is a good site. That would be something that we'd have to hear from the developers. Let's assume it is a good site. And again, I don't know, we won't know that for sure, but if the town were to put it out, and potentially it's a good site, let's assume we could, that there'd be interest in 15 of the 50 acres. And again, not all of the acres are going to be usable, as the solar developer said to me, there are certain areas they can't put solar panels on. But let's assume that there was a market demand for a 3-megawatt facility. These solar companies are maxed at 6-megawatt facilities. So if you look at a 3-megawatt facility, and the majority of those facilities that have gone up in the last two years, or are planning to go up, are generally 1 to 3 megawatts. So 3 is, we're going on the high side, hoping we could maximize the revenues. So the most optimistic would be, if we could lease all 50 acres, which, I want to put it out there, if we could lease all 50, you could potentially, excuse me, over 20 years, you could potentially bring in $5 million if a developer leased every portion of that acreage. Both solar developers said that was highly unlikely that would happen, there's no need for them to lease 50 acres, because the most they could ever put out with all the regulations would be 6 megawatts, and that would be a maximum of 30 acres. So I did want to put it out there, that yes, if that were to happen, but we're being told that that may not happen. We're being told that assuming 50% of the land would be suitable for solar development, meaning the town could then retain the other 50% for open space, then a 20-year lease at the prices that we got from these two solar developers could potentially bring in 2.5 million to the town. And that's just the lease. There is another portion of it that we had negotiated previously, which is called a pilot agreement, which is payment and lieu of taxes. We had negotiated a pilot agreement with the solar developer to pay the town on an annual basis, instead of getting taxed on the real property value of the equipment. Many of these developers want to enter into a pilot agreement, it gives the town a steadier income coming in over the 20 years, and it gives the developer a steadier outlay of capital going out, because they know what their costs are every year. Pilot agreements are now probably in the $5,000 to $8,000 megawatt annually, that's approximately what the going rates are now. So a 3-megawatt facility at a high, you know, if it's low of 5, high of 8, could potentially bring in $24,000 a year. Again, we would not know this until we put out an RFP for how much the lease would be, but just trying to give you some idea, because it's a good idea to look at something like this. So potentially, if you're looking at leasing 15 acres at $5,000 an acre, which is the high, you could potentially bring in $75,000 a year for 20 years, which is 1.5 million. And then you could potentially add in a pilot agreement at 15 to $24,000 annually, so even taking the high of that, if you add the 75 and 24, rounded up to 25,000, you could potentially bring in $100,000 a year by leasing 15 acres of this particular piece of land, which would be $2 million over 20 years. So that's just a rough estimate of the solar, it is definitely an option to do that. I don't want anyone to say those numbers are wrong, the numbers may not be exactly what we get, we would not know until we went out for the RFP. But these are industry standards based on what solar developers are paying in other I just want to, there's two more things before we turn over to the financial. There was a comment made at the last meeting about the town's valuations that we had used. When we were trying to figure out what the tax revenues would be, what the costs would be to the town, we had used a figure of $400,000 for the average price of the single-family homes that were proposed. And the question was, how do we base that? And I wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate information when we came back to you this evening, so I didn't answer it last week, but I did want to let you know that when we first came in with that $400,000 figure, we do not use Zillow and Trulia, that's not what the town uses for assessed values, we can't do that. We have to use the real numbers that we have in our own system. So the 2013 and 2014 analysis of the housing stock which sold, which is on file with the registry, and these are real numbers, these are real sales, the average size house was 2,200 square feet. And again, I want to make sure everyone understands, these are the houses that sold in '13 and '14. This is not the spread-out median value across the town, because that's going to be different, because those are not all the recent sales, but I will give you those as well. So the average size was 2,200 square feet. We had thought that the new houses, based on being three to four bedrooms on, half to one-acre lots, would be about 2,400 square feet. The median size is 2,194 square feet. The average price of all those homes that sold in '13 and '14 was $405,489. The median price was $416,750. For our purposes last week, we went a little lower than that, and we went at $400,000. So I'll tell you, we did not go high, we went a little lower than our numbers from the assessor. We do have average single-family home valuations, which is different, obviously than recent sales, but when you're looking at brand-new housing stock that's to be built, and you're trying to come up with an estimate of what the costs of those homes are, you should be looking at the recent sales, not at your blended average single-family home valuation. So I know someone had mentioned what it was on Zillow, and I would say it's close to that, but the single-family, the average value for 2015 would be 227,977. Again, this is based on DOR numbers, Department of Revenue numbers. So I did want to explain where we got that number. We were trying to be low, we didn't go with the 415, we rounded it a little down to 400,000, but the numbers were real and they came from real sales. I'm going to turn in a minute to Ed Kozinovich, the CFO and Assistant Town Manager, for some financial information, but before I do, there are two more things I want to add. The question had come up, why did the town do work on Southhold Road last week, that it's a private road? And the simple answer is, yes, the town did do work on Southhold Road, the town does work on private roads twice a year. Once a year always, potentially twice a year. The reason we do that is the town bylaws allow the town to spend up to $5 a linear foot for the maintenance of private roads. So the DPW goes out before winter starts every year, so this is the time of year, and they do some work on those private roads in anticipation of our plows going on those roads, because we don't want to have our plows get torn up by the roads. So they do, under the bylaw, make the investment in some of the private roads, to at least try to smooth them out a little bit, so the plows can go over them and do their winter maintenance. So that was done last week, it's my understanding that the work wasn't 100% completed, so DPW will be back again to finish that, and they have been doing this for decades, and they do it on other streets in town as well. If you give me a moment. One additional thing has come, one important piece of information has come to the town that we wanted to make public this evening. The town has received an offer of an anonymous donation for $1 million toward the purchase of this land. Now, this million-dollar donation, again, is from an anonymous donor, and it does have a condition on it. And the condition is, if the town opts to utilize the $1 million toward the purchase of the land for open, that the, all of the land that is purchased must be retained as open space. So if the town were to use the $1 million, again, that would mean that some of the other options that are put out there, as far as selling, leasing for solar, selling some of it off, that would come off the table as an option, because there is a restriction that is tied to this anonymous donation. So it is an option for the board to consider looking at. Last thing I want to mention, and we'll turn to the financing, I think we need to, this again, highlights the fact that we do need to look at future strategies for open space acquisition, as well as housing, because a lot of what's been talked about in these, the public hearings, have been housing. The Community Preservation Act, CPA, is a potential for some communities. I believe 115 communities in Massachusetts have adopted CPA. Auburn has not gone to a vote, it was in the master plan that it be recommended. It was my understanding that it had been looked at back in 2007, but the town did not proceed with that. Possibly this is something to look at again. CPA is a tax assessment on an individual tax bill of 1 to 3% every year. The proceeds of that have to be used for one of three different things, it has to be used for affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space. And many communities take some of those funds and use it to come up with what you call an HPP, which is a Housing Production Plan, which outlines how a town is going to get to its 10% affordable housing requirement. I put it out there, it's not going to help the situation now with this particular piece of land, but now that the discussion's taken place and people are interested, I think it's important for the town to start to look at what your options are with regard to housing. The state used to provide almost one-for-one dollar-to-dollar match on that program, they do not do that anymore. In 2012, the governor added another $25 million to the total fund, to try to encourage more communities to go forward with the CPA, because I believe it had been waning. The majority of communities adopted it back somewhere between 2002 and 2006, when funds were available. Then economic times hit, and a lot of communities didn't want to do that, and didn't want to add an added burden to their taxpayer. And there are opportunities that could be looked at for exemptions for low-income housing, exempt the first $100,000. There were a lot of different options, but we just want to make it clear that the town does not currently have CPA, and it is an option to look at, to have CPA. The town may also want to, we might want to look with the board to establish a financial policy, to begin to allocate funds annually for open space acquisition. This would get the town on a plan to start being ready, so should chapter lands become available in the future, you'd start to set money aside. It's a dialogue, it may be worth having, again, this may spur that dialogue on. We had been asked about a land trust, which I believe was actually the CPA. The CPA is what the town could do. Grafton had been brought up, Grafton does have two things, they have a CPA, which is the vote to allocate money on the tax bills. They also have their own land trust, which I believe was started in the 50s, maybe 1952. And that is a private, not-for-profit organization, so they have both things going in in Grafton. Auburn, we have reached out and had several, several meetings with Greater Worcester Land Trust, which does something similar to what Grafton does, but they do it for the entire Greater Worcester County. They have been involved in some other land sale purchases, and I mentioned last week, we did reach out to them to see if they would be interested in this particular case. The funding is not available right now to do something, but they are, there is a vehicle, should we find another way to do this, and maybe start finding a way to look forward under CPA, where you actually have a plan for affordable housing, open space, and historic preservation. And lastly, we looked at the open space plan, it may, while it was a draft, it may be an opportunity, because we did have several public meetings, may be an opportunity to take another look, it is in front of the state again, and potentially prioritize some of the purchase of those lands. So with that being said, Madam Chair, I'd like to have Ed Kozinovich talk about the potential for funding, and again, we have to give you a couple of different scenarios now, because there's a potential for $1 million on the table if the town wants to go forward and preserve 100% of this. After Mr. Kozinovich has done speaking, I do want to make a comment about a question, and this, it would probably be better after this, a question with regard to whether the town is required to purchase just the 61A parcels for 2.865 million, or the non-61A parcels, which are a separate PNS in this notice, five parcels for $250,000. So that we can talk about after, but I think we should go over the financial implications. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Members of the board, through the chair, and people in attendance, I'd like to say for purposes of showing this, or presenting this financial data, we are recognizing that the Board of Selectmen's write a first refusal for Chapter 61A land consists of 49.39 acres or $2,865,000. Please keep in mind that if a decision is made to pursue an opportunity where the town would garner some revenue either from the sale of some lots, or through future solar revenue proceeds, that that money would be set aside to be used to retire some of the debt and interest that has been incurred as a result of the borrowing. Without knowing that revenue source, I couldn't identify any potential offsets at this point in time. What we do know is that if the board exercises this right, they have 90 days to close unless there's a mutually agreed extension beyond the 90 days. But what we know is, we have to come up with a full value of the asking price of $2.8 million within 90 days. And that presents some problems in itself, because some of the, I think, recommendations are considerations that were discussed at the last meeting, suggested some revenue sources that would have to be a direct appropriation of town meeting. Town meeting is meeting on the 18th, the Board of Selectmen would have to make a decision on it before December 10th. A tax rate is being set, and a classification hearing is taking place on November 10th, resulting in a setting of a tax rate. Once a tax rate is set, the town does not have the ability to appropriate any more tax levy funds until the next fiscal year. So there are four options that I have presented, and we'll get the first option out of the way, that suggests a combination of excess levy, free cash, and stabilization. What I can tell you is that we do have a free cash balance that was certified by the Department of Revenue in early October, that gives us $6,189,067. We also have a stabilization balance as of today of $2,480,000 and change. We do have the ability to do a direct appropriation from free cash that would allow enough funds for the purchase of this property. The problem being is we put ourselves at risk at a time when we're going for a bond upgrade. And I'm going to read you some, we were just rated in September by both Moody's and Standard Appores. And as part of that report, they identify strengths and weaknesses of the town, and what would put it risk for the town in terms of future bond rating. What would jeopardize that risk, what would enhance our opportunity to get a higher rating. So in terms of Moody's, we were rated on September 2nd, we got a rating review of a AA3 with a positive outlook. Positive outlook means that Moody's recognizes that the town is moving in a favorable direction, it's increased its reserves and its financial position, to the extent that they're willing to consider upgrading us within a two-year period. They write what would make the rating go up, and they put continued improvement in reserve levels. So if we were to appropriate free, 2.865 million out of free cash... in reserve levels. So if we were to appropriate free, 2.865 million out of free cash, that would be an adverse effect on our reserve levels, and most likely would either result in that positive outlook being taken away from the town. It could potentially lead to a potential downgrade in our bond rating. What would make the rating go up? They write trend of budgetary imbalance and reduction in reserve. That would make it go down. So certainly, we would recommend that we don't appropriate from our reserves. We've taken some major steps in the past three to five years. That's put us in a good financial standing with both rating agencies. Similar to Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's rated us at the same time. We did get a rating review of a AA+. That's one step shy of a highest rating that a community can receive. They write in their rating review that the town has strong budgetary performance. Over the past few years, the town has demonstrated commitment to strengths, to strengthening financial reserves. Consideration of a higher rating over time would require the town to continue to demonstrate strong management practices, budgetary performance, and flexibility factors would also lead to remain respectively strong and very strong. There's a lot at risk here if we do not get an upgrade or we're actually downgraded. We are currently, went to market in September for, in excess of $10 million of short-term borrowing for our Auburn Middle School. Those bands will be converted in September to long-term bonds for a period of 20 years. If our rating should change or does not improve, there's a price that the town has to pay by not getting that rating, by paying higher interest rates. On that amount of money, that's significant dollars over the term of the bonds. So this option, quite honestly, is doable, but would not be a recommendation that we would make to town meeting. The other three options would suggest, or ask for an authorization to borrow money. And before the board, as you can see up in the right-hand corner, the options are identified as one, two, and three. If the town were to purchase a land at $2.865 million and not accept the gift of $1 million, well, let me start off, if they were to accept the gift for a million, the donor has stated that they would like to pay the $1 million over a three- to four-year period. So for purposes of presenting a financial model, we did $250,000 over a four-year period. Currently, the Department of Revenue in the state under MGL allows us to borrow on a short-term basis of up to five years before converting that over to a permanent bond issue. There is discussion currently before the legislature to extend that to a 10-year period. That option does not exist right now. So what we would do is, within the 90-day period, if authorized, we would go out and borrow $2.865 million, and every year thereafter, we would pay down $250,000 and roll that band for $250,000 less. So year one, we would go out for the gross value, 2865. Year two, we would roll that at $2,615,000. Year three, $2,365,000. Year four, $2,115,000, ending with a rollover of $1,865,000. That's the 2.865, less the $1 million gift, leaving a net of $1,865. At that point in time, we would convert it to a long-term borrowing. An estimated calculation of interest paid over that four-year period at a rate of 1.50%, and I can tell you that's a little high. We recently got a rate of a little under one, but the market is changing, so we try to blend it. We would pay about $177,000 of short-term interest for borrowing that money over that period of time before converting it over to a long-term borrowing. At that rate, it's roughly about anywhere from $49,000, $42,000 per year to 27 over the term of that short-term borrowing, would result in a tax rate increase of 2 cents on the tax rate. So it would be 2 cents for every $1,000 of value. For the average median house at $227,980, it would cost the taxpayer $4.56 annually. Under scenario two, this identifies a borrowing at the end of the four years at 1.865 million. A 10-year rate at our current rating, if we were to go to market today, on a 10-year term, we could get a rate of about 2% for the bonds we borrowed today. For a 26-year term, because we're allowed to go out for 30, but because we short-term borrowed for four, we're going out for the balance of 26 years, we would get a rate of about 3.1. We did a analysis provided, providing a level debt service for every year, so the combination of interest and debt is equal to a value consistent throughout the term of the bonds. The 10-year term, we would pay about $205,000 per year. The impact on the tax rate would be about 10 cents per thousand. Once again, annually, that would be a cost to the average home valued at 227 of $22.80. And the total interest for the 10-year term that we would have to pay back is about $211,400. On the 26-year term, borrowing that same amount of money, level debt service would be about $107,040, roughly half of the 10-year term. The impact on the tax rate would be 6 cents, and we're using the FY15 values, although it hasn't been certified yet. It would mean to the house valued at 227, about $13.68 of additional tax per year. Total interest paid over the 26-year period, $878,000. So significantly more interest because the term is, is three times the amount. And finally, not using the gift, we would go out and borrow $2,865,000 without that band period, because there's no paydown. A 10-year rate, still 2%. Level debt service is now $314,700. The tax rate impact using FY15 values, 16 cents per thousand. To the median household, it would be $36.48 of additional tax. Total interest, $324,900. Now, the 30-year term on that same borrowing would give us a estimated rate of 3.20%. Level debt service of $148,800. Tax rate impact, 8 cents per thousand. Median house impact, $18.24. Total interest over a 30-year period, $1,633,000. So as you can see, the longer the duration, the greater value of interest that needs to be paid. And certainly, we could go in increments anywhere between 10 and 30 years. We could go 15. We could go 20. We could go 25. It didn't make sense to show those rates at this point in time, but it's fair to say that it would fall in between the ranges that I gave you for the low and the high. So, Madam Chair, that concludes the options that we have presented for the board and for the public tonight.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add? I do. If I may, I'd like to add now the one last piece of this. It's been brought up publicly, and I know some people have asked me, so I want to make sure that everyone understands what the town and Board of Selectmen are faced with with this decision. In the Chapter 61A notice, under Section 14 of the law, the sellers are required to notify the town, which it did, of the purchase and sale for the 61A land, as well as a purchase, any purchase and sale that may be for additional land, non-61A, meaning not protected land. So the two purchase and sales that the board was made aware of in the notice is the Chapter 61A land, approximately 49 acres, $2,865,000. That's what Ed has based the borrowing and/or excess levy calculations on. Or, and a second PNS for $250,000 for non-Chapter 61A land, and this consists of two things. Two parcels, that total 2.6 acres that are contiguous. It is on the south side of South Hold Road. And another four parcels on the north side, right when you come, when you're coming down Curtis and you were to take a left, they'd be the four parcels right on your left. Those parcels are 1.45 acres, non-contiguous. They are not contiguous to the 61A parcels, for a total of 4.05 total acres. And I would tell you that it has been the town administration's contention and the town council's contention, based on the language in 61A, which we've all read quite a bit, based on other analysis that we've done, and based on the notice that was provided to us, that the town's only option here is on the 61A land for $2,865,000. I would also tell you that that is being disputed unofficially right now. Just the seller has indicated through his attorney that he believes the town would also have to exercise an option on the $250,000 for the five non-61A parcels. Again, two of which are contiguous and three are not. And I'm sorry, I think I said four before, it's three. So a total of five parcels. So the town administration has based our numbers on $2,865,000, because that is our read of the law under 61A. It is our understanding on it, based on the case studies that we've looked at, and it is our stand, understanding of it, based on the actual language in the notice that defines the land as being the 61A land, and then quotes the land, the contiguous land, as being this 2.6 acres of contiguous land, and the other land, which is the non-contiguous land. So there are two purchase and sale agreements. The town has only been acting in its research on the purchase and sale for the 61A, but there have been questions out there. Why is the town not looking at the entire purchase? And the entire purchase is $3,115,000. Because it is our contention that we are not authorized to exercise a right of first refusal on land that is not in Chapter 61A. And I would say again that that's, that is not the understanding of the seller, but that is the understanding of the town.
Do board members have any question or comment before I open it up?
Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. If you can come up, give your name, spelling your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Stephen Maher, M-H-E-R. My address is 170 Oxford Street North. I favor the solar alternative. I think we should buy this land and that we should keep it and use it for renewable energy. I just want the numbers to work right. My preference would be we get into a situation where the income from using the solar power is greater than what we have to pay in the bond. I think that would be an ideal situation. It would not involve a tax increase for the public. It's an environmentally friendly proposal. It wouldn't have to get into the matter of selling off parts of the land to preserve what's left. Now, Mr. Kaczynowicz, you gave a figure of $148,900 for the income from leasing, I'm sorry, Mr., the town manager gave us. $148,900 for the cost of leasing, for the income from leasing the land.
He's talking solar right now. You're discussing the solar option, correct?
Yes. I'm sorry, that's $100,000 income. You said $25,000 plus $75,000 we would have coming in, and Mr. Kaczynowicz gave us a figure on a 30-year bond of $148,000 going out. Is that correct?
That's with the gift, though, correct?
Right. Through the chair, when I used, for the analysis on the solar, I did not use the $1 million gift, because the stipulation we required that we couldn't. So I was looking at a $2.85 million purchase, plus whatever interest. I don't want to say which route we go, but it ranges from 175 all the way up to 1.6 million in interest. So just taking, looking at the 2.865 estimated, we could potentially pull in $2 million on a solar project if the market held and there was market interest in it. We'd have to put it out to bid. We just can't do it.
That would be over 30 years.
20.
20. Okay. I agree with the wing of the town administration and town council. I don't think we have the right to take the other one that's not 61A, and I don't think we need it. So are these proposals that you've presented, or this information you presented before the board, going to be on the town website?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may, I just want to clarify. We do have to, we would have to go out to bid for the solar. We were suggesting 20, you know, a 20-year, but we are waiting to find out from a solar developer if the land is suitable for solar development, and if so, how many acres. I just want to make it clear, because I can't make that determination. That's something we would have to hear. Presumably, it may be, but I just want to make sure everyone understands, that would be a process that we'd have to go through, through an RFP, which can absolutely be done. Thanks.
I think we should all really take a good, hard look at making this into a solar farm. I think it's the best thing we could do with this property. It wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood, and we have a renewable source of energy in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak? Mr. Koski?
Paul Koski, 18 Jade Hill Road. I'm chairman of the planning board. All right, we recommended that the town not buy the property, based on the information that we received, all right? And as I say, when you look at 61A, Section 14, it says that "Any intent to sell or other use shall be accompanied by a statement of intent to sell, a statement of proposed use of the land, location of the acreage shown on the map." All right? The proposal was sent to the town on the 12th of August and received in the town hall on the 13th. The planning board received an email on the 26th of August explaining that there was a proposal to remove from Chapter 61A this piece of property. All right? And along with it was a map of the property and its proposed use. And we had authorized, and we had approved of one part of this section, which was that new road that was being put in. The other parts of it were approved by a previous planning board, all right? And the information that we had was that they were going to put in 38 conforming lots. Five lots, as the town manager said, were not in 61A tax classification. Lots 1 through 14 were on the north side of South Hold Road. Lots 15 through 25 fronted on the south side of South Hold Road, and then it was supposed to be completed in three phases. Phase one, they were going to do the 25 lots fronting on South Hold Road on the north side. Phase two were the 12 lots that we approved of on the new road that was supposed to go in. And phase three was a lot at the end of a cul-de-sac called Number 38. We never saw anything other than that, okay? So when we said, "Don't purchase it," what we were looking at is 38 conforming lots. And had we seen anything else, I would have suggested in September that we start this process. But looking at 38 lots that we had approved, I saw no reason to purchase the land. If it's not going to be those 38 lots, and that should have been included in these purchase and sale, because a certified copy of the executed purchase and sale has to specify what the land is going to be used for. What the planning board saw, 38 conforming lots. Now, if it's used for something else, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's here in the purchase and sale.
Mr. Koski, would you mind coming back? So are you, are you, are you, if I understand what you're saying, you're talking about the difference in what's now being talked about with the...
Right. It should have been in the original purchase and sale.
The potential apartment complex, right, in the phase two?
Right. The planning board never saw the original PNS, okay? Had we seen the original PNS, and it had these other things in it that we're fighting with now, our decision would have been completely different than what it was. What we saw was 38 conforming lots. Now, where this other stuff came from, I have no idea.
Well, the first, the first that I was aware of it was the Board of Selectmen meeting, not the last one on the 27th, the one prior in meeting, not the last one on the 27th, one prior to that, whatever the date was, Mr. Sundin and his representative were here. And I just want to bring, I just want to bring this up, because I know that, I know the numbers weren't concrete, but I specifically asked the question, and the percentages that he gave me were, and he threw out a couple of scenarios, basically, but he said, if, if that complex was developed, 70% of those apartments would be single-family, 25% would be, or would be one-bedroom, 25% would be two-bedroom, and 5% would be three-bedroom. Roughly, the numbers were 144, 48, and 12, based on those percentages, which comes out to 204, he said possibly 200. So, I know it's not carved in stone, but that's basically, that was the direct answer to my question by Mr. Sundin's representative. So you're telling me that...
That's what we were presented with, right there.
I understand that's what we were given too. I just want to be clear, you're saying, no time during the discussion with the planning board, was there ever mention of that 200 units?
No, never.
Okay, thanks.
This should have been in the original purchase and sale, and if it was not, if there was something else in there, then we should have had, been aware of it then, and I would have contacted the town manager in September and said, "Let's start this process. Why are we doing this?"
But...
I appreciate it, thanks.
There was, there was never an indication in the purchase and sale for, whether it was the, the house lots or the 40B housing. The only legal requirement they made to be, to give to us was that proposed use of the land is residential. And, I mean, I, I've watched the planning board meetings, I knew that that land has an approved subdivision.
Right.
So, one, one would believe that that's what they were following. They never informed us of the 40B until that, and it really wasn't clear and specific as to 40B housing. We still don't have a plan. The town has not been, been presented with, with a plan, and with this 61A, they're not required to.
Well, if this is what we were presented with, if this is in the original proposal, that's what we were looking at, 38 conformed lots.
But that's not in the purchase and sale.
Well, I don't know why it isn't. It says that they're supposed to have everything in there that they're going to do, and it also says that...
They're not required to sell.
That if it varies from what they have in the PNS, then you can't sell the land.
Through the chair, if I may, and I'll turn to town council, but it is my understanding that the notice of intent under Section 14 of 61A requires that the seller, not the buyer, but the seller notify the town of the purchase price, what the change of use will be, and what lots it affects. So, it's my understanding that they are not required to give you details of the reuse proposal, but they are required to tell you if it's going to be residential or commercial, and what parcels it applies to. But I would turn to the town council.
Mr. Henneken.
Chairman, it's through, through you. The statute, as I said last week, is very clear in terms of the requirements of what a seller has to notify the town of to exercise the right of first refusal. And, and those are a statement of intent to sell, a statement of proposed use, location and acreage of the land, owner's contact information, a certified copy of an executed purchase, purchase and sale. All those things are, all those items statutorily were identified in the notice of intent, and that's what the board eventually will have to deal with, is, is what, what are we dealing with, as given that notice of intent between the town and the seller, not necessarily what the buyer intended to do or stated in a PNS.
Thank you.
Well, as I said, what we received was that, and what we received was these, Phase One, 25 lots on South Hold Road were going to be constructed. Phase Two, 12 lots on the proposed road that we approved of. And Phase Three was the one lot that covers that whole back area. That's, that's what the planning board received, and that's, that's what we made our decision on.
Thank you.
I have one more question about that, then. So, if, if, if Phase Two was going to change, and it wasn't, was in fact going to be, if, if it was purchased by the developer, and Phase Two was changed to this complex, does that have to go back to the planning board?
Oh, I would imagine it would have to go back to the...
Okay, all right.
If it was being changed.
One more, one more.
Hello, my name is Jenkins. I am located at 154 Packard Chalk Street. That is the little house and the, the property where, when the people do not stop at the stop sign at Curtis Street, they wind up in my yard, again, again, and again. Okay, but that's being, that's nothing new. I've been there since 1968. And I have one question, and I have some comments. Allow me, I'm old.
Please go ahead.
And I don't want to change my little house and sell it and whatever, if I can. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm also short. Well, my question is, that land, as far as I know, was zoned rural. And did the zoning board ever change that zone so that, to sell it for, for any other purpose? Either living quarters or industrial, for instance, or anything like that? Isn't there some process of having to go through the zoning board to make sure that it's zoned appropriately?
Go ahead. Through the chair, the land is zoned residential B, but the issue that I think we just need to clarify is, just because it's zoned residential B, doesn't mean it couldn't be classified as Chapter 61A agricultural land. So to be classified as 61A agricultural land, the owner has to apply each year to the assessor's office for 61A classification, meaning the land will be farmed. That provides a, an exemption of sorts under Chapter 61A every year that is refiled by a landowner. And if that landowner decides to take it out of 61A, which is the situation we have now, there are issues resulting in the landowner having to pay back to the town what you call a rollback tax on taxes that had been exempted over the years since it was 61A. So the zoning is still the RV zoning, but the classification is 61A.
But, but the, the, the town doesn't have any recourse in, in that respect, that they don't have any salvation, so to speak.
Through the chair, the, the town's, I guess, I don't want to say the wrong word, the town's recourse, the town under the law, has the option to exercise its right to purchase or to waive its right. So the recourse would be, the town could purchase for the current asking price under the purchase and sale. The town can't stop a 61A process because it is the, the right of a landowner to apply for that under state law.
Yeah, well, I wish that the town would, would purchase the land because of various reasons. And I missed the other meeting because I wasn't notified. It would be sweet if the town would notify the people who are directly affected of such meetings in due time. Otherwise, it is not transparent, and that's not really what we elected our officials. We want to hear from you, and we want to hear what's happening, so that we can, well, if nothing else, get together or drink and cry. I, as I say, I'm living at the top of Curtis. I'm living on Packard Chalk Street. It is a narrow road, as roads go, and I'm absolutely delighted with our sports complex, but it does occasionally simply stop the traffic on Packard Chalk Street, which is annoying and inconvenient. And also, we got a lot of traffic and construction noise and dust and, and inconvenience when they were producing the sports complex. Now, we are to put up with that again from a much larger complex. And this complex, incidentally, is, will be sort of a, a compendium to the, to the complex called Upland Gardens in Worcester. So, we are kind of located between two, two projects. And, call them like that. Well, also, the road, Curtis Street, is very narrow. It's almost, barely a two-lane road. How are you going to improve that road? Are you going to take people's property so they can, you can widen it so it becomes a responsible road? That would be very expensive for the town, and we will meet with a lot of opposition. And the same goes from, from Upland Street. It is also extremely narrow. You can barely go for a walk with your dog there without being hit. And they were going to add 1,000 trips per day through that very dangerous intersection. I've lived there since 1968, and I tell you, there are so many accidents there, and so many police chases, and so, it is so dangerous. And this is going to add to the danger for the whole community. And it is roads where children walk to school. Right now, I sit watching them coming home and going, and they are thankfully very well watched over, but you can't watch them all the time, and there's all this crazy guy who's in a hurry to get somewhere. And, you know, it's just too dangerous for that, for, for the, for the, for the population of that area, and very irresponsible. And you keep talking about South Hold Street. Have you ever noticed the chain that's across South Hold Street? Have you actually walked the land? Have you watched that chain? You know, that chain was there for a reason. South Hold Street is an easy, easy shortcut from Worcester. And we had a lot of very quick drivers who were often, because there was a doghouse at the bottom, it's, it's gone now, thank God, but there was a reason why that chain was put up, to stop traffic going through from Worcester to Auburn. People seem to have forgotten it, but I've lived there for so long, and I'm so, so engaged in my, in my position. So this is what I say, please take that into consideration. I think that the idea of a solar farm is beautiful, and the rest of the land, please take it and make a dog park, and a skating park. I mean, where do we go and take our, our pets for, for a walk? We used to have Cuddings Field, we don't have it anymore. Where do the kids go to skateboard? They get chased away from absolutely every, every spot. You know, teenagers are human beings too. I'm sure that if we even opened up a little, a little animal facility down there, we could get, we could finally get a responsible way of hiring a dog, a, a dog officer and treating animals in town too. That's just my take.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening, and I'm very grateful to be a citizen of Auburn, and I hope I can afford to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else wants to speak? No one in this whole group? Please, come on up.
Hi, good evening. Stephen Holmes, H-O-L-M-E-S. You spelled my first name right in the paper, I appreciate that. I don't know if anybody is paying attention today, but you told us we just got a million dollar gift from a donor. I don't know why we didn't get a standing ovation for that. I mean, that just puts a whole different spin on something. I'm ready to jump up and down and say, "Thank God." I thought maybe they didn't understand how much money that was compared to this price. That makes a huge difference. I think we can cut right through a lot of this red tape and just start going, let's, let's buy the property. I mean, it only makes sense, it's an investment, I think it was, if I'm not right, Mr. Proudie said, "It's not a cost, it's an investment in the town." Somebody a lot smarter than everybody in this room realized that, that's why they gave a million dollars. They read what's in the paper and realizing, this is too important to let this developer come in from out of town, do what he wants to do, he's, he knows what's happening with the laws and the affordable housing, so he's absolutely not giving us all the information because he's trying to keep his cards close to his chest. So I say, "Let's eliminate this guy, buy the land, and have a nice day." Thank you.
Sorry, I don't move much faster than this process is moving. First thing, it's, while it's the season to whip the daylights out of the state legislature, I think you ought to tell them about the process, which gives the developer many advantages. The developer can go through that process like a racehorse. The town is more like a hippopotamus out of water, and it takes us really too long to give careful consideration that we should give to an important item like this. I was real happy when I came in today because I saw the picture up there. That's a picture of the area, isn't it? I don't know who put it up, but I would tell those of you who have never walked the area, or never seen the area, or seen only that photo of it, that if you go on your internet and look up southholdmeadows.com, you will see about eight of 10 photos that show that area from various viewpoints, and you'll get an idea of why that would be an asset to the town. You would also see as part of that website, which I think was developed by the seller, you'll see a map, which isn't really a map, it's an aerial photo of the area. Part of the reason that I gathered for wanting to support this was that it would be good for Auburn's business. The aerial, aerial photo shows us something a little different, I think, because it shows us, and if you know the roads, you know which way are the quick ways, you'll see that it'll be easier for anyone from this development shopping to go to the old Fair Plaza and shop at Price Chopper, or Burlington Coats, or whatever else is in there. If you want to do grocery shopping, you're not going to go to the big place in Auburn like BJ's. You won't go to Home Depot, you'll go to Worcester, to Walmart, and Sam's Club, and that area. You're leaving probably instead of going to Auburn Mall, because the road is, unless you do something marvelous to South Hold and Curtis and Packard Chalk, it'll be easier for people from here to go to the shops at Blackstone Valley than it will be to go to Auburn Mall. So the, the bonuses to business are going to be more to businesses in Worcester than to businesses in Auburn. But if you look at that aerial photo, you'll also notice what one of the previous speakers just said. When you do, and we coined that word, I think, "Guesstimates." When we did our guesstimates last week, we had guesstimates that guessed at the density of this housing project, and guessed at the number of children you could expect, and the number of cars, et cetera, et cetera. Some of that was based, and I have no quarrel with the developer from Holden, he's a darn good one, and we would be lucky to have such a developer, but we used his sources. We gave a little report on the estimated school, number of schoolchildren we could expect, which ranged from 40 to 70. The project, if your guesstimates are right on numbers, is going to contain about 215 units, both apartments and single-family homes, with a total of about 420, 425 bedrooms. Now, I don't think most of those bedrooms are going to be empty, and I don't think they're going to be places where you can house Aunt Mary or Grandma. In other words, I don't think that these bedrooms aren't going to have a number of children, and I think 70 is considerably underrating what would actually be there. As I said before, I don't know the basis of... As I said before, I don't know the basis of all of these figures. I do know that they were done by UMass Dunahue, a firm that does make studies and things like that. That's not what the school committee ever used, or the school department ever used in trying to figure out the number of kids, which was the NASDAQ population studies. But I will tell you this, when you had 71 and said, "They would be, they might be, they could be, we hope they will be split evenly between the various classrooms," well, the chances of them being split evenly are slim to none. And at the rate, our classroom, well, let's say this, we have certain maximum sizes that we want for classrooms and a number of students that is in a classroom. And the number in almost all our classrooms is very close to that maximum desired figure. And you think if 71 is an underestimate, and I would think we're more apt to have 150 kids or 200 kids from this development, you think of the effect that's going to have on our classrooms, on our teaching staff, the number of teachers we'll have to hire. And you'll see that perhaps our guesstimates are rather dangerous. I would hope that you would see, you know, with a million-dollar gift, I don't see any reason for hammering this any longer. I mean, I think that makes it clear that we should make this investment for the town of Auburn. I think if you look at that, if you look at southholdmeadows.com, and it'll take you about three minutes to look at all the pictures and that aerial map, that you will have, in your minds, no concerns about what it might do to our taxes or our bond rating or any other financial matter. And I know that's important to many people, but I think that the guesstimates show that there's more danger to let it go and to keep them as guesstimates than to have it under town control where some of these scenarios would never happen. Thank you.
Is there someone else who wants to speak? Right here, please.
I live at 121 Southhold Road and I'm the actual abutter to the pasture land that we're talking about. I would like the town to make the investment if they could. I really would appreciate it, but I also want to note that I've been approached many times by Bob Post for him to buy my land, to put an access road into his property through my property. And I never wanted to really go that route. I didn't want a road through my property. And I didn't think it was fair to Southhold Road to put all those people going out onto Southhold Road from my property and his property. I also, when he decided to sell the land to this builder, I got a letter from the builder stating that he would also be interested in talking to me about options. And I didn't pursue it because I still don't want to sell my property at this point in time. And so I didn't respond to his letter, but when I thought it was a done deal that the town was going to let him sell the land, I really truly believed that, I decided to call him and see what he was thinking about and I have not heard back from him. So my feeling is that maybe he's considering going out Route 20, which would make a lot more sense than to put people onto Curtis Street or Southhold Road. Not that I want that either, but I certainly, I mean, it would be, if it had to go that route, I'd rather people be going out Route 20 than onto Curtis Street or Southhold Road. That's my only. But I'm really hoping for the town to invest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Westerman have his hand up? Mr. Westerman?
Carl Westerman, W-E-S-T-E-R-M-A-N. I agree with Mr. Proudy, which is kind of strange, but he's got a good point because the average, from what I understand, is two and a half kids per family. Now, the cost of the kids going to school hasn't been brought up now. You've got 200 kids and from my understanding, now, it could be off a little, it's 7,500 per kid per year. Now, let's talk about buses. Let's talk about kids that are handicapped and stuff like that. What's that going to do, you know, if we have to pay out? It's going to be a lot more than a $3 million. And I think we should all sit back and realize it because I know what construction can do and I know the number of kids going to school and, you know, health and everything else. So please, think about it twice. We'd be a lot better off buying the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Please, up in the back.
My name is Bruce Vron. I live Old Farm Road of Upland Street. Over past here is living over here. It's nice and quiet. Right now, we have hard time going into Upland Street because we have huge developing in both Worcester and Auburn. In top, we have Upland Street Garden, which is another one. And now we're hearing about third one and we're basically squeezed to, it's a little thing with traffic. And you try and go from like any street of Upland Street with people flying from top hill down or up top and you don't see any view, it's so dangerous. When we added these multiple buildings, would be traffic incredible. And that one, it's attaching Upland Street, Packetchuck Street, with first thing, we go into Upland Street. This is like, this would not good too. And I hearing in this last meeting, this says management be good for take care of these multiple buildings. What management can change, like always, everything change. And this happened like Upland Street. Management change, we have stoppings, killings and everything around. This is new, huge developing, this we bring same thing over here. Maybe beginning be good, management changed, we come and same thing like we have now in Upland Street, now Upland Garden. Top this, like they mentioned, cost, we have income from taxes, from houses, anything like this. This is how they mention, how much it would cost town to maintain the roads, maintain streets, school, hire policemen, firemen, because this be everything coming more and more. This be cost not go higher if we get income from taxes for take care of this, schools, policeman department, water department, everybody. Okay, this be not better work to buy this land and this cost be much less.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mrs. Holstrom, then Ms. Maher. And Mr. Maron, if you could check in the other room to see if there's anyone who wants to speak. We're under public comment. Thank you.
Kim Holstrom, H-O-L-S-T-R-O-M, 273 Central Street. I have a question through the chair to the CFO. Mr. Kastenov, you mentioned that the tax classification hearing is scheduled for November 10th and that once the tax rate is set, we cannot appropriate any further funds for fiscal 15. So am I correct that the town meeting on the 18th could then not appropriate this $1.8 million if the classification hearing were held on the 10th?
Through the chair, Ms. Holstrom. No, the board, the town meeting couldn't authorize a borrowing. That's not a direct appropriation.
Okay, but if the town meeting chose to appropriate from free cash, it wouldn't be able to do that?
You can appropriate from any available fund. You can't appropriate from tax levy once the tax rate is set. So you can appropriate from overlay surplus, you could appropriate from free cash, you could appropriate from stabilization.
And you could also not raise it all in one year?
Well, to raise it would require an appropriation from tax levy.
So if the town were to, instead of borrowing, go out and just bite the bullet and spend the $2 million or $1.865, whatever it is, if we take the million-dollar gift, which is a no-brainer to me? Somebody's willing to give it a million bucks?
They would have to do it before the tax rate is set. Otherwise, they would have, they could only raise it in the ensuing fiscal year.
So wouldn't it behoove the board to not limit town meetings' options and set the tax classification hearing for after town meeting, not before? Because I would like the options available as a town meeting member. I'd like to know that I can, that the town meeting has every option available to it. And if, I know it postpones sending the tax bills out by maybe a week or 10 days, but it seems awfully foolish to set the tax rate before town meeting has a chance to vote on this.
If I may, through the chair, and I would ask the assessor who's in attendance to maybe follow up on my comments, but if town meeting were to do a direct appropriation one time of excess levy at November 18th, because I think the article that is going to town meeting says to raise, appropriate or borrow, so it does have the ability to identify a revenue source that would allow for direct appropriation. You would have to wait the full seven days after an action of town meeting before that vote is certified and with the potential of a referendum vote, if anyone should challenge that appropriation, which could carry it beyond, I think the election would have to be held so many days after the referendum is filed. If that is the case, we wouldn't be able to set a tax rate, we wouldn't be able to send out third and fourth quarter tax, third quarter tax bills. Could result in a cash flow problem, which would result in us going out for some revenue anticipation notes in order to provide cash that would allow us to meet our obligations over that period of time. Cindy, do you see any other problems by that proposed proposal?
You would have to go up to the mic, Cindy. Thank you. I don't see a chair next to town council.
Cindy Cosgrove, assessor. Basically, what would happen is if it delayed us to the point where we could not send out our bills for January 1st, we cannot send out our bills for the fourth quarter. We would only send out a fourth quarter bill. It would not go out till April due May 1st. So that's a significant amount of time that we would be looking at, probably, like Ed said, we would have to borrow. There's no provision for sending out an estimated third quarter bill for something like this. So it's kind of important that we meet our deadlines and get our tax rate set timely and I think that's why Ed is looking at this as the best option.
Thank you. Mr. Maher?
Kevin Maher, for Stonebridge, M-A-H-E-R. I think we ought to take the money and run too. I think it's a wonderful offer we've had and I hope we act on it. And I'd like to thank the CFO for some accurate numbers and I hope they're published tomorrow so we can have them, how we know we're talking about. And I would love to be a fly on the wall when that discussion takes place over that purchase and sales agreement. But setting that aside, I have to talk to some issues why we should buy this property and I don't mean this in a disrespectful manner, but I think we have to take the financial proposal that the town manager applied last week, just throw it away. We don't build roads, the school projections are estimates, all that sort of stuff. And I don't mean it disrespectfully, it's just the numbers aren't good in that document. There's some concerns with it. So I think we have to look at it a different way without building roads and listen to people like Ron Proudy, who's been involved with the department, the school department in Auburn and knows the numbers. But I'd like to point out some of the concerns we would have if we didn't buy this and what could happen to the town and to some of the people. The actual number of units today are unknown. We will never know until the site plan's filed. The developer's thinking, like all developers, is what we call maximum utilization. If I can get 280 in there, I'm going to get 280. If I get 250 houses or units in there, they're going to do it. That's going to be the goal. So you've got to really keep in mind, we have no idea how many units are going in there. And I don't care if it's a friendly or a non-friendly Chapter 40, okay? The traffic issues. I actually did some calculations today. I talked to a professional engineer in an institute. I looked at the data from the Institute of Transportation Engineering and Mr. Coyle's numbers are higher than mine. I think you're Mr. Coyle, right? Never met you before. I think they're accurate. They're higher than mine, so I'm going to use them. But let me explain what's going to happen here. You're generating 1,600 trips a day. We don't know where they're going to go, either Southhold or Curtis, but they're going to go somewhere. I'm familiar with Curtis Street. I think hopefully the people at my recommendation went down to Greenwood Street and picked up Southhold and came up that way and to see where the traffic may be pushed to over towards Upland Street coming out of the village. I think you've got to really look into what's going to happen to Curtis Street because the street, as somebody indicated last time, it's a country road. The street is narrow. It's a 2,300-foot street. If you had to improve 1,500 feet of that, now, I think the numbers used in the, the numbers I will use from the previous report, I think was done by the town engineer, who is extremely competent, I think his square foot, his linear footage was somewhere around 550 a foot. We're not going to have to do 550 a foot on the roadway on Curtis Street. If we had to do half that, $250 a foot or $300 a foot, we could be approaching a cost to cure on Curtis Street of $300,000 to $400,000. And if you have to do a widening, I think you're going to tell the people who live on Curtis Street, they're going to be taking some of their front yards by intimate domain. Now, could this happen where the developer could go, get a Chapter 40B, get it approved? Granted, we all got 30 days to talk about it, but meaning, a 30-day response period doesn't guarantee that they're going to do what the town asked them to do. So the state could come back and say, "Your comments were fine, but good luck, Auburn." Would we be confronting a situation where we would have to improve Curtis Street based on public safety and we'd have to put up the $300,000 or $400,000 grand? We don't know. The developer's not going to want to, but we may have to. Southhold's a little wider, but the, down the bottom, but when you get into Worcester, which we have absolutely no control over, it's impassable. So the major issue I have as an abutter, as somebody who lives in the area, if you talk to the people, and nobody has, even though it was recommended, that's a procedure you should do when you have a 61A, is talk to the abutters, get a feeling for the area. If you look at Betty Street, Curtis Street, Stonebridge, Southhold Road and the throttle area around the entryway of Packetchuck and the throttle area around the entryway of Patchogue, Upland, and Curtis. Good focus point is Mr. Artisan Jard, it's right on the corner there. You ought to go park up there sometime. You'll actually see the nicest lawn in town. Look at his, look at that area there. Because what's going to happen if you put that project down there? Those roadways impact significantly 70 households, 70 houses. Now, I'm not an expert on town finance, road development, even though I'm a developer. I am an expert in real estate. My companies in the past 12 years have sold over 1,000 properties in this town. I'm qualified in court to give testimony on real estate, residential real estate and land development. I think you need to tell these people on Curtis Street and those other streets that I'm going to reach in your pocket and I'm going to take money from you. Because that's what you're doing to them. You will have a direct negative impact on their property value. Not their tax value, which will probably go down, but on their fair market value. And that's how much you're hurting them. Is it 10%, 15%, 20%? I don't know. I've never done a cost analysis and a comparison approach where you put in a development and you don't. But I can assure you it'll be significant. I understand the scenario that we use to look at what was going to happen down there on income production. I can tell you right now today, if you build 191 units, I doubt you would see a $400,000 house selling across the street from it, okay? If you look at housing in Auburn where the 400-plus thousand is, it's out in the rural section, it's on cul-de-sacs, it's in more, it's in quieter areas. They're happening on Bryn Mawr, up by Damski Farm where Paul Revere just closed out that transaction up there, 10 or 12 lots. There's two or three other lots in the process of the development. They will probably sell $400,000 housing. So you can't even consider $400,000 housing if you're going to build 190 apartments across the street from it. If you do, I've got a bridge to sell you, okay? Come and see me. So it's these type of issues. We haven't investigated the cost to the road system. We haven't investigated any improvements to the road system in terms of what improvements we may have to make. We have no cost data of the negative impact on the property owners, which we really should do. Because if you're going to hurt them, you might as well tell them how much it's going to hurt. I think that's very important. I think we have a unique opportunity here with a million dollar gift. And my goal tonight was to try to come out of here with a consensus. I think that this board should vote and say, we want to buy it. We want to protect the town of Auburn for the people and it makes good economic sense. It makes good conservation sense and it protects the people in the direct area. That's all we're asking for. Not to sit here, oh, let the town, let the town meeting take care of it. Let's put it to the voters. You're our town fathers. I hope you'll stand up and take a vote and say, we want to buy this. And work with the town accountant to figure out how you're going to buy it. And go into town meeting and be advocates. Because I tell you, we'll all be there with you, okay? So I hope you consider stepping up to the plate and saying, I want to buy this land tonight and we ought to go to the town meeting. And imagine that, we unify the town. Because there's a lot of controversy, a lot of negative crap out there, what's going on here. I don't know how in tune you are, but I hear it. Maybe I'm overly sensitive about it. Put all that behind us. Forget all that crap and work together as a community and do something for our community. That's all we're looking for here. Politically speaking, you'll come out smelling like roses, folks, okay? The town manager will sit there and say, look what I've done for the town of Auburn. And all the people in the senior management will say, look what we have done for the town of Auburn. We stood up for you. So I hope you do that. Because there's a lot of people out there looking for you to do that. Forget the guy from Holden, forget his data. It's all irrelevant when it comes to Auburn. I haven't seen him pay a tax bill. I haven't seen him at the supermarket or a Little League game. I don't think anybody has. And there's no disrespect to him, he's a classy guy, but he's not from Auburn. These people are all Auburn people. I hope you take care of them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Public comment over in the corner, please?
John Mulryan, Emmywell, R Y A N 23, Curtis Street. First, I wanted to say thank you, Kevin. That was basically all of the points that I was going to make, but I'll reiterate them. And I moved to Auburn about five years ago, bought my first house on Curtis Street. And I have, we just made the decision to live there forever based on the idea of this beautiful park, this dead-end street. And it was a decision when I bought the house that I thought we'd be there for three years. Over the past two weeks, I've thought about this project. And I have concerns over taxes and the values on property, the impact on the school system as an educator myself and using realistic projection numbers. But by far, my number one concern is the safety of my twin boys. There are two, by the way. And how this will risk their safety on a daily basis. Right now, they enjoy crossing the street to the park. Many children ride their bikes on the road. The traffic, the street traffic from the park has drastically increased, but it's all happy traffic. It's kids playing games, it's kids warming up for their soccer games or their baseball games. This will only increase as the playground gets produced. Last week, I heard many people say that this is an important issue and we feel that the town people should vote on it or the people of the town should vote on it. Unfortunately, I feel like that is the same as saying, we waive our right of first refusal. I think it unfair to expect people unaffected by this project to increase their taxes and to vote to save space that they may never see. So with this being said, I think, I have started to think about worst-case scenarios and how this will impact my family's quality of life. And again, I just said this, I'm going off my sheet here, but currently I live in a very quiet neighborhood where kids have an amazing childhood. So I've asked for a plan on how you will protect Curtis Street. Whether that means widening roads and sidewalks and curbs, and that's all great. That's not my choice. But a choice, an idea that I've heard, just in hearsay, and I think is a great option that I want to plant the seed for, is to dead-end Curtis. Keep it as a dead end. Let them develop it. I don't love that idea either. I'd much rather it be open space, but if it has to be, keep it as a dead end, as it is, as it is signed as a dead end. Control the traffic down Southhold, control the traffic down Curtis. It'll essentially be the same as it is now and the children will be safe. And Curtis Street is a neighborhood that's turning over. We've had three house markets in the last year, or three houses on the market in the last year. It's a neighborhood that's turning over and there'll only be more children, minor two of, I believe, 10, under the age of five. Along with an educator, I'm also a Caldwell banker, real estate agent. And actually, a number that I fully support, as Kevin just said, I believe that houses in the new development in Auburn can certainly support the $400,000 number. There are plenty of comps that prove that with sales in the last year. But two things that they all have in common is that almost all of them are on dead-end streets. You have the ability to do that, dead-end Curtis, and therefore dead-ending Southhold. And none of them have apartment buildings as neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Hammond, H A M M O N D, 23 Rock Ave. One thing concerns me, I hope we don't live in a country now where we can't openly criticize our elected officials at an open meeting. Not that it's my intent, but I was a little taken back that one of the first warnings was, please don't criticize us. I just want to mention, I think that's what open meetings are for. I think that's why you put your name on a ballot, is to be criticized, to be held accountable. And if, as I've experienced, if they don't agree with you, they'll criticize you at the ballot too. So I hope, I just hope we don't live in that type of community. I love this town. I don't live up there, I've never been up there, but I do love this town. I love what this town has done with the school system. We have invested almost 100, I think over $100 million in new schools in the last 20 years. That fight was going on when I was a kid, you know? So when I hear these numbers of 40 to 70 kids, that's maybe today. That's maybe when it opens. And that's with 25% affordable housing. But when half of them don't rent because it's affordable housing, what do you think those are going to become? Probably more affordable housing. And then when the rest of them don't rent, what do those become? Well, that would be more affordable housing. Now, I'm not against affordable housing, I just think affordable housing needs to be done right. And we can't look at what we think is going to be today, but what's going to be in 30 years, 40 years? Some people in this room, unfortunately, will probably won't be here. Some will be retired. I will hopefully be retired, but still here. But you have to look at the long-term impact, just not today. The fight for the schools has been ongoing, it's been divisive in the town. It's pretty much been settled and I think to the better. And I don't want to have that fight in 10 years. When the schools are overcrowded, they can't handle the kids, there's trailers on the back of the schools again. And that's really what we're looking at here. This process has been less than stellar. Now, I don't know who to hold accountable for that. I don't know whose shoulders that falls on. I certainly don't know why or how it got to this point. But I think someone needs to be held accountable for that. And I'm leaving it up to you guys to figure that out. We all have reasons why it's been less stellar. Some people have heard through this Facebook, phone calls, flyers, but very few have heard from it from the town. So, I mean, that's something that should really be considered. Now, we're here for this plan. And this is where I kind of talk a little bit more long-term. There's 700 or 500, 500 to 700 acres on Prospect Hill. We're going to be having the same meeting in a few more years unless that open space plan that was done nine years ago actually becomes reality. Because if you think this is an issue, wait till that opens up. If you haven't been on Kelly Street, it's open as far as your eye can see. And that's going to make this nothing in comparison. I don't think the board's done anything, I don't think the town's done anything to set money aside and be prepared to buy that when that first right of refusal comes up. That is, it's a huge, huge concern for me. The, one of the final things I want to say, one of the two final things I want to say is, I want to address the affordable housing because it's a good thing. And we don't have affordable housing, we don't have enough of it. Now, there's two reasons why we don't have enough affordable housing. The first is the calculation of affordable housing does not include trailer parks, okay? So when we argue that we don't have enough affordable housing, we don't have enough affordable housing based on the calculation set by the state. I would argue we do have plenty of affordable housing. So what I would ask is when this is over, residents, the Board of Selectmen and everyone, we should be petitioning the state to include the trailer parks in their calculation of affordable housing. We meet the standard. Why are we being hurt because they don't want to calculate it? I speculate we're being hurt because most cities don't have trailer parks. There's a finite pool of money for affordable housing offset. And those cities aren't going to give it up to a town like Auburn because we want a little piece of that money, okay? That's one point of affordable housing. Include the trailer parks, we meet the quota, we'll get some money for that. We don't fight for it, we're not going to get it because we've got to take on Worcester, Boston, Springfield, those types of areas that really want that money. Secondly, I had a woman in my office last Friday, we're in tears. She needs to sell a house. She can't afford it, she needs to sell a house. She's on the list in affordable housing. It's like two to four years, depending on who you are and how long you've been in this town. Elderly people are literally dying before they get into affordable housing. Literally dying. This is not something that you can ignore. I see it in my business, I see it everywhere. You probably all know somebody here who's on the list, who's been on the list for years. If you guys want to get serious about affordable housing, then get serious about affordable housing for the elderly, okay? That's where we need to be, not for the families. And I'm not saying that because I'm against families or anything else. I probably would have qualified as a family for affordable housing. But because elderly don't put the drains in the school systems, okay? The elderly don't use the resources like children do. The elderly have a set finite of resources which can be managed. And you know what? They deserve it. Why should these people be dying in a house or in a home that they can afford? So you have two schools coming offline, I believe. One right next door, Julia Bancroft. I don't know if there is a process or where the process is, but what we should really be focusing on is repurposing those schools for affordable housing for the elderly, okay? And then looking more for affordable housing for the elderly. If you don't want to go get the calculation, well, then let's focus on there. As far as the million dollar gift, I'd hate to break it to you, but it was not me, okay? Just so, save your thank you cards, don't send them to me. I didn't do it. But if I had, if I had it, I would have probably donated something. But the million dollar gift's a great, it's a great idea. It's a great concept, it's a great idea. I don't know who did it. I'll only say, through the greatest controversy comes the greatest solutions, okay? And maybe they were watching these meetings on TV. Maybe they saw Facebook or the flyers or got the phone calls. Maybe that prompted the phone call. So for everyone here, I'd like to thank you for helping bring this to the public's eye. And certainly would like to thank the donor for the million dollars. It's a no-brainer for me, however you want to slice it. Mr. Kasnovich, I worked with him for three years. He is by far one of the best numbers guys I've ever met. Being a numbers guy, you know, take his word for it. If you give him a problem in the direction, he'll figure it out, okay? So I think we should take the gift, I think we should maintain the open space. The one thing I would caution this town on, because I've been there, when you decide not to buy that $250,000 land because you disagree on what 61A says, okay? I want you to think of the cost it's going to be to litigate not buying that land because you disagree. Because the cost to litigate it may be just too much, it may just be worth buying it, working with the seller and the buyer in agreeable fashion where they void out or something. Because I'd hate to see us spend 100 grand to defend our position when we could have owned the land for 250. Makes no sense if you ask me. So think ahead on that, please, think ahead. What's the cost to litigate? Please buy this land, please accept the donation, please find out who it is and tell everybody so we can thank them properly. Thank you very much.
Please come up.
Mark Seliger, at the Curtis Street, S E L I G E R. I kind of promised myself I wouldn't speak, but this has been going on for, I don't know, 14 years with this land and I've spoken in every meeting. First of all, I want to thank you, you answered five of my questions, so that I asked last week. But I learned as a, I'm an engineer, been that way for 35 years, is that when I present data, I don't advocate. And what I was hearing a lot today was advocating and advocating for no. And there is something wrong with that. Should just be the data should be presented, not with if, buts, whats, we don't know that. And always sided to degrade of things. So I just wish that we just have the data. The CFO was fantastic, was very clear, thank you on that. But to me, a lot of this has been about the process over the years. The town has pushed off dealing with this land for many years, okay? I remember the day when the chain was down and I put it up and next day it was down again. And that's when Tommy Townsend moved back down the street, okay? And we had a lot of talks. And then a couple of years later, there was a thing in the planning board, which I did not get notice of, but someone told me about it, that they wanted to clear the roads, I mean, clear the land for agricultural and quote-unquote, and graze cows there. I've never seen a cow on, down there, okay, at all. I've seen a lot of animals, but never a cow. And a lot of dogs, including my own, that get walked down there. But through the whole process, it's been a little while. Mr. Coyle, I forgot to thank you. You, when we're doing that before, you did inform me, the engineer before you was the one that informed me of other meetings on it. But through the process, when we got to one of the subdivisions, I think it was But through the process, that when we got to one of the subdivisions, I think it was a seven-lot subdivision, it was deemed a approval not required, but in fact, it was. Because of my part of the Curtham Street, there's a private road, and there's rights that I have when abutting to a private road. And the chairman of the board, the planning board, not you, sir, said, oh, we'll get it later, okay, on it. Excuse me? Not yours, the one before yours, they said. They will get it later. And then we went up to the next phase, which put that road in, and again, it was in addressed, we'll, we'll deal with it later. Well, there is no more laters, okay? We have to deal with it. It's been going on forever. There's never been a cow there, there's never been anything addressed, there's old setting up in Maine, you can't get, you hear there. You can't get up or Curtham Street, I have four-wheel-drive cars for a reason, because I can't get up. Before then, I used to go up backwards on the rear-wheel-drive car to try to get up the street. The other side of South Hall Street is even worse, okay? You can't get there from there. And I finally remembered back in the late eighties, early nineties, when Worcester wanted to put land, what really stopped that. And that was a three-car accident that winded up in the lot of the TVA gas pumping station, okay? I used to work nights, I came out, took a picture, blew it up about that big, brought it down to Worcester Town Hall, and they said, one more accident at Lousy location, and it's going to be a problem. So, all the access roads to that one area are poor. And, you know, again, 14 years, I've not heard anything, any resolution on that whatsoever. But the other one is, if we had a plan in 2006 for open space, and it's gone nowhere, that shame on us. Who's been pushing that? Then we have another plan that went out in June, who's been pushing that one? It's just going to sit and, you know, basically get dust and rot in the state? Is someone actually going to do something about it and actually work at these plans that we're spending a row money and people's and its town time on developing these plans to go absolutely nowhere? Because what I heard today, that's what it was. We have two plans, it took me a while to download them and site. And the last thing about the process, I nearly forgot, I spent several hours attempting to find any meeting notice, any agenda or anything that stated that anybody in any, any committee, conservation, planning, looked at this plan. I could not find anything. I have not gone to Town Hall to look at the hard records, okay? But there was nothing in the paper, there's nothing in an agenda anywhere on this. The first thing I saw on any of the agendas was on 14th, when it came to this selectment. Okay, so I don't know what the open, you know, meeting policy of this, but you've heard it here a couple of times, okay? This has been going on for a while, the town's known about it, and nobody in the town had a chance to understand it, okay? Now, I guess I could watch the planning board on TV all the time, no offense, it's a little boring, I read not. I, I do try to look at the agendas and see what's happening on there, but if I don't have a agenda, I don't know. If there's no newspaper covering what's going on the board, how am I supposed to know what's supposed to happen, okay? Unless we use our computer systems and maybe post minutes, but again, there's no minutes for any of the meetings on the internet that I can find. So, totally in the blind, it's been 14 years with this land. I'd like to put it to where it should be, where it was for eons, there's open space, and keep the neighborhood safe. I had a car skid into my property last weekend, and a beer can thrown out of the window. Coming up from South, that's South Hall Street, so that's, I'm assuming Worcester. So that's more what we can expect if this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? This meeting, we have one in the back, is that Mr. Frost?
Ken Frost, Boy Street. The town manager mentioned that when the seller lands, there's going to be a rollback tax charged to the seller, and what kind of dollars are we talking?
Through the chair. It's approximately $90,000. I would turn to the assessor to explain what that tax is. I know she presented it, I believe, on October 14th a little bit, but I turned to Cindy for the details.
No, he's already turned this money in?
No, that, that does not happen until the sale is consummated.
And that can be used for the purchase, part of the purchase of the land?
Mr. Kasnovich.
No, according with DOI regulations, it has to be recorded as a, as a general fund revenue.
So it'll be in free cash or something or other that?
It would, it would, it would close out ultimately to free cash at year end.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
I just have one question, so you can hear me.
No, I'd prefer, just so everyone can see you at home.
Oh, great. I have one question. There's five selectmen, select people, you're our town fathers. Could we hear from you tonight what your thoughts are on the direction of the community, and what we should be doing with this thing in front of us? Should we buy it, not buy it? What we should be doing? So it'd be nice to hear from our town fathers, so I hope, I hope we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Westerman?
This is real quicky. Is there any possibility that we can get a cost for 200 kids to go to school, if in fact, you know, development goes that way? And what it's going to cost us in taxes? And then are we going to end up buying another school or building another school for the extra kids to go to school? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Before I close out the public comment, we'll hear from the board members. This hearing will be continued. Not sure of the date, but we'll all know before we leave tonight. I'll now open it up to board comments or questions. Mr. Holstrom.
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I know that we have many people out there tonight that are not able to be here and ask the questions, and I'm hoping they're sitting watching on the TV to hear some of this information out here. Yes, the criticisms have come tonight. I'm a big boy, I can take criticisms. It's unfortunate that it takes one big issue for the public to come out. There are many issues that affect this town day-to-day. We have issues come in front of the board all the time, and there's not a soul sitting out in this audience. Yes, again, I can take the criticisms, but I think I would be criticized if I didn't go from this point here, from where you are out there, you have your state, your town reps, and your representative town meeting. I think I would be criticized by people that are not here tonight, not able to be here, that I may not have heard from. If I turn around and say yes and no to this issue tonight, I didn't give them the opportunity to speak. We have a five-member board here, yes. Mr. Maha, thank you, we are the town fathers, but we are also responsible to the public, to the residents, to the taxpayers. And I'm not going to say yes or no, I'm still asking questions. This town needs to hear the answers, but I also need to hear the answers before I can make a educated decision on where we're going to go with this. Yes, I've heard a lot of pro tonight, yes, we should buy it, but I haven't heard the other side of the fence, whether we should or we should not. If we should not buy this, then tell me why, where are we going to go with this? I would like to see the town come together, go to the town meeting, and hear it there. That'll be an open hearing, but before the open hearing can be heard at town meeting and decision made, you have to hear from people like yourselves, and also, the people that are not here. Call the town meeting representatives, tell them what you think. I've heard a lot of pro here tonight, and I've heard a lot of pro and no con. And I guess I got to hear the other thing to make an intelligent decision. That's why I would be criticized, I believe, by the people that are not here tonight for not allowing us to go to town meeting. Cop out? Yeah, you can take a look at it as you want, but I'm still responsible to the people that put me in this seat. I want to be sure their responsibility is returned. Thank you.
Mr. Simoni?
I'm going to try and harness all these thoughts that are rattling around in my head and make sense of it for you. Because I've sat here for the last two weeks, and I've listened to everything that you've all had to say. So, I'm going to start out like this. Number one, during the town manager's comments, I was happy to hear that she's in favor of CPA, I brought it up a couple of years ago, I called it a land trust, that's just semantics, the intent was there. With the million-dollar gift that we've been given, or potentially given, if we had done this two years ago, when it wouldn't even be considered when I first brought it up, and we had put $500,000 a year into that, and it was matched by the state, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, because we'd have the $3 million. But that said, I just want to ask you, how many of you here are town meeting members? Okay, I'm, I'm happy to see that, because I'm sure that the spin doctors are going to take what I'm about to say and run with it. I sat here last week, and I thought originally that going to town meeting was what we should do. But I listened to all of you last week and this week. I had an entire week to digest all of those comments, and see how passionately many of you spoke. Mr. Proudie just made some phenomenal comments. And I absolutely agree with what Mrs. Holstrom said. I don't think that we should hamstring town meeting by taking away one of the options, because I happen to think it's probably the best option, the least impact. So, with that said, I don't want to preclude any other members of the board from making comments, this certainly can under discussion. If I get a second, but I'm going to make the motion right now, that the town, that this board, vote to purchase the land and direct town administration to come up with, if these are the funding options, that's great, if there's anything else, to present that to us as well. But I do not believe that we should abdicate the leadership role that you've given us. I think that right here, right now, this board should lead as they've been elected to. And I'm asking, I'm putting that in a motion, I'm asking for a second.
Is there a second?
Well, second, if a discussion.
Mr. Copent, round of discussion.
Couple of quick questions. Ed, you mentioned, and the assessor mentioned, we needed to meet X deadline. What is the deadline date that we need to make a decision on the tax levy, so as the bills can go out on time?
Well, I believe it's already been advertised as a hearing, tax classification hearing scheduled for November 10th, which is next week. That being said, I think in order to, if any consideration were given to postpone that, I think we would have to wait till the action of town meeting before we could advertise for a second classification hearing. Because I, I think to, to present a, a, I think we could hold a classification, but you've got to realize, the numbers could change, which means the tax rate could change. So, the financial data and information that is presented to the board at a hearing is driven based upon the fact of appropriations that are voted on by town meeting. Knowing that could change as a result of a funding mechanism that would help fund the purchase of that article, could significantly change the tax rate. So we would have to postpone it. I, I would have to talk to the, to chief assessor to see what issues that would present on her end, and whether or not we would have sufficient time to hold a meeting at a later date and still get the tax bills out by January 1st.
Well, we can have a hearing and not make a decision, correct? The purpose of the hearing is to hear from the public, hear from the business community, hear from anyone who wishes to speak on the item. The board does not have to make a decision on November 10th. It simply needs to take testimony and listen to what's being said, understanding, as I do, that if town meeting decides to make a change in, to appropriate money from one of the items that you mentioned, we may have to update our figures. If we hold the meeting open, it shouldn't be a problem. But we would need to know, should we have an extra meeting? Should we do it right after town meeting? Because we usually post a meeting on town now. What are our options?
There are a number of moving pieces here. Number one, I, I think there's an assumption that you would have a quorum, and action would be taken at the November 18th meeting. If there isn't a quorum at that meeting, then the meeting would have to be held at a later date, and I don't know if there's an alternate date that has been agreed upon. That being the case, there's, like I said, there's a seven-day waiting period after the action of town meeting, before that vote could be certified, so we couldn't, because it could be a, a movement for a referendum vote to overturn town meeting action. So worst-case scenario, I think you took, you're talking potentially 14 days after, and I don't know if it's inclusive of, of weekends and holidays, but let's, for the sake of argument, let's say 14 days, you're putting that at 25th December 1st, in honor about December 1st, before we would get a certification from the clerk? I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to turn it over to Cindy to see if that's doable, that timeline.
Cindy Kaskarova, assessor. Basically, what would happen if we got into the beginning of December, we would have to advertise and hold classification hearing. Once the hearing is done, because we normally do that small commercial exemption, it's another two weeks before I have the final figures ready to go to the Department of Revenue. Our tax bills are due at the printers by December 15th. We would not make that deadline. At that point, we would be at the mercy of the Department of Revenue and the printers to get the bills out on time.
We are meeting on the 10th, so perhaps we could have some more clarity on the 10th, and then we can, we can go from there. Whether we need 14 days or we need seven days. If we need seven days, we could meet any day that week as a board, provided people were available, and do what we need to do. I mean, I'm happy to do that. But, I have to agree with Mrs. Holstrom, who is a bit of a budget hawk, and has been a budget hawk for all the years that I've gone to town meeting. So, you know, I think that her comments would be a bellwether for town meeting members themselves. So, I would like to give the town meeting members as much flexibility as we can meanwhile meeting our obligations. So, perhaps next week, or even before next week, we can have an answer.
Mr. Simoni?
If we go the route of town meeting, we take option one off the table, correct?
I think the only way to take any of those options off the table, first of all, remember, within the 90-day period, you have to come up with the full value of the, of the purchase price.
Understood, but you, you stated that if we hold the tax classification prior to town meeting, option one no longer becomes available, correct?
No, no, that would be option, it's on the back page. Option one, two, and three provide for a borrowing. You can, you can set the tax rate and authorize a borrowing after the tax.
So, option four, so basically, if we go to town meeting, we remove that option, and the only options left to them is definitely to borrow money. They're, they don't, they don't have the option, there's no option to consider using, what was it, stabilization, free cash, or excess levy, correct?
Can you repeat that again?
After the tax classification?
Yes.
I believe you said town meeting cannot appropriate money from free cash, stabilization, or excess levy?
Once the tax rate is set.
Or once it's set, which would be our meeting on the 10th, if it goes as scheduled next week?
Once DOI approves a tax recap sheet, the ta, the tax rate is locked down.
Right. So that only, that only leaves the borrowing options, pretty much, for town meeting to consider?
No, you could No, you could raise and appropriate through free cash or stabilization after the tax rate is set as well. Just excess levy, you cannot.
Right. Well, that's what I, so originally, I asked if option one was off the table. That's the one that says excess levy, and you said no. You said option four.
No. Option four utilizes a combination of excess levy, free cash, and stabilization.
So, option one, as I originally said, that comes off the table for town meeting. They can no longer appropriate through excess levy.
Options one, two, and three would pay for debt and interest in future years through excess levy, or within the limits of proposition two and a half. So, it's a future-year commitment, or appropriation, that helps fund that authorization. It doesn't require direct appropriation in year one. You have an authorized to borrow, you have an authorization to borrow. Once we go out and borrow that money, from day one, six months into that borrowing, is an interest payment is due? That would put us into the next fiscal year? As well as a year-one payment of debt, which also puts us into fiscal '16?
Maybe I'm asking this wrong. You said that one of these options disappears after the tax classification is set.
Any use of excess levy to fund any portion of that purchase automatically disappears once the tax rate is set.
So, option one's off the table for town meeting?
No.
Correct?
No. Option.
Option one speaks of using excess levy?
And I just, I just told the board that it's an authorization. Excess levy would be used in future years towards a payment of debt and interest, not in year '15.
So, all four of these options are available to town meeting?
Yes.
But they couldn't, we couldn't use excess levy?
If you go to town meeting on the 18th and postpone the tax classification.
I'm not talking about postponing. I'm talking about, once the tax classification is set, we cannot use excess levy.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You can't use excess levy for fiscal year '15.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, we set the tax classification, if it goes as planned on the 10th next week, we cannot, that's not an option to town meeting. They cannot appropriate through excess levy.
Provided, DOR, DOR has to approve the tax recap sheet. You could have a tax classification hearing, and delay any action, and continue that hearing.
But the assessor just said that would be perilous to do that.
Well, there's a timing issue. There's a consequence by not setting the tax rate. You wouldn't be able to send out third-quarter tax bills. It's an option.
And that would, that would in effect.
I wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend that option, but it is an option.
Okay. But, again, we're arguing semantics. The bottom line is, if the tax classification goes through, then excess levy comes off the table as an option.
Just, just a point of clarification. Town meeting needs to appropriate the money. We're not abdicating our responsibility. Town meeting needs to appropriate the funds in order for this board to say yes. Right now, the only thing that this board can do is say no, because we have no appropriation. So, it's not, we're sitting here saying, oh geez, we're gonna have to make a decision. Because frankly, I have no problem making a decision. I do have a problem, and I share Mr. Holstrom's concerns, that I have several questions that I've asked, that I haven't gotten satisfactory answers, or complete answers to. So, for me to sit there and say, okay, we're gonna buy this money, we're gonna, we're gonna buy this land, without having the full knowledge of those questions, on top of the fact that we mentioned two new schools, or two schools going off, we talked about other 61A land, you know, there are other neighborhoods in town too. And as Mr. Hammond pointed out, Prospect Street, Kelly Street, Eddy Street is a huge landholding. It's about a six-to-seven million dollar hit. So, when Mr. Kasnovich tells us that it's two cents, as I've heard in any number of town meetings, it's 25 cents, it's a dollar, it's a dollar and a quarter, and we, we all say, sure, we can afford a dollar and a quarter. But if you took all those dollars and a quarters, and all those five cents, nickels and dimes that have been appropriated over the years, I think we'd all be rather surprised at how much of a bite that takes out of the average tax levy, or the tax bill, how much that adds. The fact that we're funding three schools, two through a debt exclusion, one through the tax appropriation that we do every year. So, we have made those good investments, but they've come at a cost. They've come at a very severe cost for many people, and, you know, we do have to consider everybody. When I ran for the planning board the second time, and actually Jane was one of my opponents, and I said that I care about everybody's neighborhood, and I do, and I have always stood up for neighborhoods. And when people talk about, well, who was talking about open space? I can tell you, I was. And I was talking to an empty room. And I pushed that plan for three years until I left the planning board. I brought up a land trust. There was no interest. When Lorraine Nargren was alive, we had the Natural Resource Planning Commission, and we came to this board, which was a different board than this, and we said, we need to do the CPA. We were told, no, we can't do a CPA. We can't afford that, because we have to build new schools. And for six years, that's what we heard. And we heard additional appropriations from the school department, which were necessary, and I take no quarrel with it. But when people say, oh geez, you know, the town fathers, which, by the way, Mr. Maher, we do have Doreen and Denise here, and they don't look like fathers to me, they look like mothers. So, we are the executive board of the community, but I will also say that we all, as residents, have to take responsibility for the decisions we made over these last 14 years. And I can tell you, as a planning board member, as a chairman of the master plan committee, and as the chairman of the master plan implementation committee, I was talking to an empty room. And I asked this board, and, you know, the faces and names have changed, but I've asked this board any number of times to find the money. We couldn't even fund the master plan for four years, because there was no available funds. So, I do take exception to the fact that someone says, well, nobody was pushing it. I was pushing it. The people on my committee were pushing it. And all we heard was the deafening silence of an empty room. So, while I appreciate you being here tonight, and I appreciate your concerns, and I certainly will take them into consideration, because I have been on South Old Road, I have been on Curtis Street, I've been on Stonebridge Road, I've been on Old Farm Road, I was on the golf course, trying to see how we could expand it to 18 holes, to only see that, gosh, this land isn't contiguous with Mr. Post's land. So, I don't think we're gonna be driving over South Old Road in our little mini-cars. So, you know, I have done my due diligence. I understand your frustrations, and I took responsibility for the slow response, or the poor start at the last meeting, and I'll again do that tonight. But, you know, as someone who's held office in town, elected office for the better part of 20 years, you know, I need you here, not just tonight, when you're under threat, when you feel that your livelihood, or your investment in the town. I need you when the Krosowski farm comes up. I need you to stand up for your neighbors, because you're asking your neighbors to pay, to protect your neighborhood. So, when those properties come up, I hope to God that each and every one of you takes the time to come up and stand up for your neighbors across town, because they need our support too. And we are asking them to bear an additional burden. Is it worth it? Of course. Anytime you save land, it's worth it. But we also have huge tracts of land under 61A and other parts of town that are going to impact your taxes. When those two schools come offline, it's gonna impact your taxes. When something happens in the economy, it's gonna impact your taxes. So, it's not two cents. It's not, you know, 1368, because that's just this project. Let's add up all the projects, and see how much it costs you to have these things. So, I just ask you to bear that in mind. I appreciate you being here, and I will make a decision that I think protects the interests of the town, and will be respectful of yourselves. As for criticism, I know the town manager started off with that. I did say, a couple of weeks ago, that we signed up for the tough love committee. So, I, you know what? I wish I heard from more of you in the interim. Our numbers are on the webpage. If you have any further questions in between now and whenever, call us. Ask. Then at least we can get you the information, so that you're not waiting, that you're not having this anxiety. You know, if we can't get you the answer right away, at least we can put it in the pipeline, so that it's, so that it's there for you. So, I would just ask that, and, you know, echo Mr. Holstrom's comments, and say to the rest of the town, you know, call your town meeting members. Come to the next meeting here. We have public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. Tell us what you think. Tell us, are you willing to stand up for your neighbors? Or do you just want to let this piece of property go? Because we need to take their opinion into account too. So, I thank you, and Madam Chair, I think I'm done.
Anyone else on the board want to speak? Mrs. Brotherton?
I'd like to thank Mr. Carpenter for those words of wisdom. I too echo those. It's very easy for someone to come forth and say, well, this is what I would do. I'm one person. That development, I don't live, it's not in my backyard. Would it bother me to have it in my backyard? Absolutely. Do we need that size development in the town of Auburn? No, we don't. Do we need the extra traffic? No. Can our school system handle the number of children coming in? Which doesn't include special ed? Which doesn't include the fact that we could be paying more if Auburn does not supply those needs? We are paying more to take any child who deserves it to another school system. I'm a little taken back, because nobody knows really what my thoughts are. And I have, I was the one down there with the dog over the property. I also was down there in the pouring rain on sad day, because I was not familiar with the land. I'm familiar with Saybrook, I'm familiar with Curtis, the road stinks. I'm familiar with that area. We also haven't looked into the bus numbers. With the schools changing, are the numbers of buses gonna change because of the closing of Mary D? So, are we already looking at a higher traffic flow before this complex goes in? Very possible we are. Most likely we are. On the flip side, though, I can't make the decision for a town. And if it is going to affect the other side of town, Bryn Mawr, Paul Street, Loring Street, whether it comes to numbers in a tax bill, whatever, there's been no one here to speak about that tonight. So, I need to listen to the other residents. And as Mr. Carpenter said, please make sure you're still around if there's other land issues, because they're gonna need your help and your guidance. Thank you.
Mrs. Simoni?
Yeah, I just have one final comment. I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm pretty disappointed, because this isn't about one person, it's not about five people, it's not about the people that are here tonight in this room. It's about the town. It's not a neighborhood versus neighborhood thing, and I, I really have some disdain for that. We shouldn't be pitting people against each other, we shouldn't be pitting neighborhoods against each other, we shouldn't be talking about all that stuff. Bottom line, this is about Auburn. We are all Auburn, every single one of us. We all pay taxes here, whether we use the schools, whether we use the fire, whatever services we use, we are all part of this town. And I'm really, really disappointed to see this turn into a neighborhood versus neighborhood, or an indictment of any of you, and what meetings you have or have not attended.
So, I, I see that. If we could just hold off for one moment, please. We do have a motion on the floor, we're still under discussion. We don't allow public comment under discussions, under a motion. If the board wishes, because I've already closed public comment, we can hold action on this item, and reopen public comment to people who have not spoken, if that's the board's wish. We have, I believe, three people who haven't spoken yet that would like to speak.
I'm willing to hold it, and let, this is about the public, let them speak.
Okay. So, we're going to hold the motion, we're going to allow those who have not spoken at all to speak once, and then we will go back to discussion under our motion and take a vote. Mr. Michael Hammond?
Mike Hammond, H-A-M-M-O-N-D, Melba Ave. I am from the other side of town. I think you should buy the town, buy the land. It's not about my neighborhood versus their neighborhood. I have a pretty big complex in my backyard, that the planning board, and zoning board, I believe, befuddled, and cost us quite a big tax levy with Lowe's leaving. I don't want to see something like this happen. I know it's not tax income. But I've noticed that when the town gets involved in making big decisions, things usually don't go well. Your people here have spoken. Mr. Holstrom said, I haven't heard any cons. I don't know what the other side of town's thinking. Well, I'm here, buy the land. I am the other side of town. You're not hearing any cons, because there are none. If people didn't want you to spend the 1.865 million dollars, because we have the $1 million gift, they would be here. This meeting's been going on two and a half hours. If someone didn't want you to spend their money, they'd be up here. Mr. Rabidu would be up here, trust me. Thank you.
I'd just like to inform everyone, the point that Mr. Simoni made, I normally don't agree with him. But the people here have spoken tonight, the majority of them have told you what they want. It's the board's responsibility to take action. When we have a town meeting, we take action on the articles, and take a position. You're not voting for this tonight, you're just taking action as a board with a vote, saying that you're in support of the operation up at Bancroft, I mean, Packer Chalk, or whatever you call the area, post, post properties. So, I think that the board should stand up and take a position. You're not voting for it, you're just saying you're either in support of it, or not in support of the article.
Thank you.
So, the only thing I wanted to say was what the first gentleman said. I'm not from that neighborhood at all. I was over on Old Farm Road for many years. But I'm over here, right over here, around the corner. So, and I don't think that it's neighborhood versus neighborhood. I'm here as a member of the town of Auburn, and I don't want to see that project go in. I, I had Upland Gardens in my backyard for 10 years, when I was on Old Farm Road, and that was before it was developed, before Old Farm Road was connected by the side street up to Meadow Brook. So, I was one of the first people on that street. There was only six houses on the street at the time. And there were fires non-stop at the top of the hill. And I don't know what that area is called now, but it's all now townhouses. They used to set that hill on fire, and that's when we had a Auburn volunteer fire department. So, we'd have people tracking through our yard to put out fires. And, you know, you don't want that to come more into Auburn. I'm not saying that Upland Gardens is like that now, but I bought that house in '81, so that was 30, over 30 years ago. But I don't, don't think that you should have another project in Auburn. I really don't. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is the last opportunity for anyone to speak, before we close public comment again, if you haven't spoken already.
Michael Rackett, J-2 Road. I don't live in the area, that area either, but I think that if this thing is built, the people on the other side of town, they're gonna take a hit anyways. Taxes are gonna go up no matter what. So, I'm willing to, and these people, their property values are gonna get crushed. So, raise my tax. So raise my taxes to help these people out, because it's just, it's the right thing to do. I don't, you know, it's going to happen. I voted no on every proposition, 2 and 1/2. This one, I'll vote for, to help these people out, because they're going to lose some big value in their house, and that's not right. And like I said, the people across the town, I talk to people about this, they feel the same way as me. They don't want this. And they're willing to pay higher taxes to send this guy packing, because he's the one that's going to make the money, and these people are going to take the hit. You know, that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Maran?
Good evening. Michael Maran, M-A-R-A-N, 25 Bancroft Street. And for disclosure, I'm also a member of the zoning board of appeals. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, and I am not in a butter and immediately in that area. I'm also a town meeting member. And in hearing a lot of the discussion this evening, and listening intently on the last meeting, and the numbers as they've been revised, and I've shared before openly, every time Mr. Casanova speaks, I always learn something. So I appreciate your expertise. Property values are of personal consideration to me. And again, I'm not in a butter, I don't reside in that part of town. But I've heard a lot of comments. I am, I'm not sure I completely understand, and I've tried to listen to the timing aspects of what triggers the sequence of events. And I appreciate the position that you're in, that you may not feel compelled to decide one way or another. I would suggest, though, that in the order of importance of this decision, and the comments that have been brought forward, that, and not speaking on behalf of anyone in my precinct, excuse me, and certainly not speaking on behalf of anyone on the zoning board, just personally. But I would certainly personally be in favor of the town purchasing this land through a mechanism I learned tonight of the million dollar gift, the opportunity for. I think that that's something that is a game changer in the decision process. I also appreciate there may be a need based on just the flow of events, that this decision needs to go to town meeting. And if that's decided, I respect that. But for expediency, I would like to see this board and respectfully town meeting. And I know how I would personally vote at that time to support the town owning this land. And hearing the first time that the million dollar gift would be binding for open space and preservation, I like the idea of having an opportunity, because I'm a property guy, I like the idea of having an opportunity to recover some portion. But I also think that the million dollar game changer is something that you really have to listen to, and really go the other way, and maybe make a different way that revenue makes sense. So thanks for the opportunity to speak, but in whatever way this goes, I'm not from immediately that area, but speaking from, just as a guy that loves the town, I think it would be the right thing to purchase this land. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no additional public comment tonight, I'll again, close public comment. We will continue this hearing, and you will have another opportunity for public comment. But I'm now going to bring it back to the motion, which is on the floor, and under the, it's been seconded, so under discussion. Mr. Holstrom, and then I'll go after you.
Yeah, can we hear the motion, please?
Motion to purchase the land and direct town administration to come up with funding necessary to purchase.
So that's what I wanted to, just under my comments clarify, is, Mr. Grossman, the motion was to purchase the land tonight, it's not to take a position on the article. The motion on the floor right now is to purchase the land and the board to vote that tonight. Under my comments, I, too, want to thank you all for being here. It's important that we have public comment. What the board could have done at this point is to waive our first right of refusal. I've heard at the last meeting, and then again tonight, that it's a done deal, and that we had made up our minds. If we had made up our minds and if it was a done deal, I assure you, we would have taken that vote at the last hearing to just waive our first right of refusal, and it would have been done, the developer would be, you know, signing on the dotted line with the landowner. But we didn't do that. We held these public hearings, we asked for public input, which we're getting, it's evolving as we speak. Tonight, we learned that there's a million dollar gift on the table. We had residents who stood up tonight and said, I'd like to see a solar farm on the property. We need to listen to everyone's input on this. The million dollar gift would preclude us from putting a solar farm on the property. The resident in me, the resident in me says, take the million dollars and run. The selectman in me says, listen to everyone, follow the procedure. We received the notice on August 12, 2014, a statement of proposed use of the land residential that met the legal requirement. I, like Mr. Kosky, believed that it was going to be developed for residential purposes. I knew that, you know, because I follow all of the meetings, and the planning board meeting, knew that there were approved subdivision plans for that property. No one, no one knew about the proposed 40B housing. This board didn't know about it. I, you know, I know that, you know, there's been some conversations and the lack of transparency. I'm telling you tonight, this board on August 12 did not know about this chapter 40B housing in the deal. We just didn't know about it. These hearings are important, we're getting information. I think, you know, we've, I can speak for myself, that I've heard from a lot of town meeting members, and I'm hearing that town meeting members support this. And that's the vote we can take. We can take it to send it to town meeting for a funding authorization. We cannot exercise our first right of refusal, take that vote until we have a funding mechanism. I personally want it to go to town meeting. I'm not saying that we couldn't use excess levy tonight, and everyone's property taxes go up $800. I want it to go to town meeting, but I think that we've had an open and honest conversation here, we're in night two of the hearing, and we just had a game changer on the table as well, a million dollars. So how do we move forward with funding? But this board, as it has done in the past, takes a position on town meeting warrant articles. The motion on the floor right now is to exercise our first right of refusal by purchasing the land, and that's something I can't do tonight. This hearing will be held open, we will take a position. I think it's, it's been pretty clear from most of the selectmen who have spoken, that it's an investment, and it's worth the investment, it's an impact on your neighborhood. Go to town meeting and advocate to purchase the land, and I believe that town meeting will support this. But we have to see the process through, we have to have this hearing. This hearing will continue unless Mr. Simonian's motion passes right now to exercise our first right of refusal, and we will schedule the next hearing, continued hearing date. Did you have something?
Madam Chairman, I would just, I just wanted to comment, just very, very briefly through you to the board, that be very careful about exercising any motion that states that you're going to purchase the land. The board has no appropriation upon which to do that. To act, if that, if that motion is construed as an exercise of the right of first refusal without an appropriation, and there is ultimately no appropriation, I think then we have a problem. To the extent that the motion is altered in such a way as to be contingent upon, or to even be a consensus, or perhaps even considered at a later date, I would suggest that that be at least considered. The statute provides 120 days for this process to take place, and we're still within that 120-day process. And the legislature intended that, that they intended and they understood that public hearing would take place. And they understood that the town would need to do, take certain steps to necessarily find the money and to get the appropriation. I'm just very concerned that it would be construed that a, by a board voting this evening, as the motion is worded, as I understand it, to purchase land, would be construed as the town's vote to exercise its first right of refusal without an appropriation.
Mr. Simonian?
We need an appropriation before...
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Simonian, yes, sir.
Do you have anything else, Mrs. Simonian?
Yeah, through the chair. We've been presented with funding options from the town, so I guess I'm not clearly understanding.
All of those options require a action by town meeting.
So basically, we've painted ourselves in a corner to a degree, because if the tax classification happens next Monday, town meeting cannot go the route of excess levy. Right? And we've basically given them options to only borrow money, which I think is absolutely ridiculous. So that's fine. I don't want to put, the last thing I want to do, I've said it a million times, the last thing I want to do is put the town in a position where there's going to be litigation, or the potential for litigation. So withdraw the motion as stated. But I'm, I think it's, I think it's really, really sad that we've put ourselves in this position where if the tax classification goes through, as planned, next Monday, town meeting cannot consider the option of using excess levy.
For the record, Mr. Carpenter, do you withdraw your second?
Yeah, I do withdraw my second, and I just want to say, that's why I've asked Steve for options at next week's meeting. We may open the tax classification hearing, but we may not close it. So we're not, we're not necessarily closing the barn door next meeting. And I have seen the select board continue those hearings to more than one hearing. So we just need to find out what the drop dead deadline is, and then we can make a choice as a board at that time, as far as setting or not setting the tax levy.
Mr. Simonian?
Through the chair, Mr. Carpenter. Dan, I completely understand, I don't disagree with you. I'm, at least it gives us an option. But it puts us in a position where we kind of have to trade off maybe selecting the lesser of two evils. That's, that's a position we shouldn't have put ourselves in. It's too late now, we have to do something. We certainly can't put the time in a position where we can't send out the tax bills, because we have things we have to pay for. But it's a shame that the potential is there to take this option off the table. I happen to think it's, I mean, it's the option I would have recommended, so be it. But since we're going to move forward with taking a position on the article, I guess at least we'll have that on the record.
So moving on, we have the discussion on the warrant article before you.
Madam Chair.
I'll be setting the continued hearing date in just a minute. It's the... I, we've closed, we've closed the public comment at this point. We're going to continue the hearing to next, why don't we set the hearing date now? We have the tax classification hearing at 7:00. Are members available any time after 5:30 next Monday? We can hold this public hearing from 5:30 to as close to 7:00 as we can?
I'm available.
I'm available.
Mr. Simonian? We're setting the next hearing date?
You guys are going to miss important information if you walk out now, so I'd ask you to hang on just for a second.
Yeah, we're just, we're just determining whether selectmen are available next Monday at 5:30.
There's people who still want to comment, so...
And there are people who want to go, so I just want to check the date of the continued hearing.
I have no problem with 5:30 to 7:00 continuation of hearings. There's people who obviously still have some things to say, so I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue the hearing to 5:30 next Monday.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of continuing?
Aye.
The hearing is continued to 5:30 next Monday, if anyone wishes to be here. We do have tax classification hearing at 7:00. I would encourage you to plan on staying for tax classification. Generally, we just hear from the businesses, and it would be wonderful to have some input from residents as it impacts your tax bill. So, thank you. Is there a motion for a five-minute recess to close the hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess for five minutes to clear the room. Thank you all for coming. We're back in order here. So the next item on the agenda is discussion on the warrant article. So members have a proposed second warrant article regarding the, the non-61A parcels. Is there an interest in reopening the 1118 special town meeting warrant? Mr. Simonian?
At this time, I don't, I don't think we should. I think we should go with the article as, with the warrant as it currently is, and it'd be careful here, because I just, I'll just say, I don't think, I don't think right at this time, it's in our best interest to add an article regarding land that's not currently classified as 61A.
And this, according to town council, this article can be held, used as a placeholder, and we can withdraw the motion and not even give, we can withdraw the motion and not have, give town meeting an opportunity to even consider it?
I'm sorry, I meant, town meeting would have to make the motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay, right.
If you put it on the warrant, the board wouldn't take it on, but town meeting could postpone it, if that's what they want.
Okay, if it was recommended to postpone, yeah, I mean...
Entirely after town meeting, that's what they want.
Right, but if it were, if it were put on by town administration, by town manager or the board of selectmen, we would recommend postponing indefinitely, and the town meeting could take action on that.
If you make that recommendation, town meeting could take action.
So how do members feel? We, this... I know we have to be careful with the...
I, through the chair, I would agree with Mr. Simonian, who stayed with the article and has presented to us ahead, we are dealing with the 61A land, and I believe that's what we should be addressing, and I believe that we should leave the article as drafted, that was presented to us here. That'd be my motion to have the town meeting warrant remain closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, under discussion, I'd just like to hear from town administration on the timeline, I guess. Again, we're being careful here, under discussion, not to violate executive session. Would we have to call a second town meeting?
Madam Chairman, if this article, if the town warrant stays as is, and there is a need to, for further appropriation for additional purchases of property, an additional town meeting would be necessary. Or another town meeting would be necessary.
Okay. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Holstrom, then, Mr. Simonian?
Again, my understanding is we are addressing the 61A property, and that's why I would, that's why I made the motion to keep the warrant closed and not to expand any further.
Mr. Simonian?
So, we know, we know basically that the option would be available. I realize it would be difficult to have, potentially have a third town meeting just to address one warrant article. But in this case, I think that, I mean, that's my... But in this case, I think that, I mean, that's my opinion, I think that's our best course. Mr. Holstrom said in his motion, and I'm of the same mindset, I think we should focus on what's before us, as far as the 61A, and if we have to address that at a later time, I'd just rather do it that way. That's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through you to town council. We have a draft in front of us with a warrant article addressing the 61A. If there is anything above and beyond that, can we add that in as a, the motion to be read at town meeting? When we get further information on...
Through you, Madam Chair. The problem with that, Mr. Holstrom, is always within what is the scope of the notice that was provided to, to people? And so when you always, you always look at, what does the warrant article say to determine what's the notice given to people? And the notice under the first draft article, the one that's already been approved, actually, is the notices of the 61A.
I understand.
So the moderator would have to make a decision, he probably, Mike, with some confidence with me, he'd have to make a decision as to whether any amendment to that article fits within the scope of the notice. And that's when the issue would have to come up.
All right. Then I will stand with my, my motion as to the warrant closed.
I'm, I'm going to ask one question carefully. If we don't include the second article, and we just move forward with the first article, can we give options one and two to town meeting?
Madam Chairman, I may defer to Mr. Kasnovich.
I... I had a look at that. That's all right. Madam Chair, I'd like to be clear. If, if, if you're saying that the second article is not included in the warrant?
Right.
Can we exercise options one and two? Yes, because it's seeking an authorization. The authorization, regardless of the gift, is still going to be, will still have to be for the full value of the purchase price. So, so the article would have to authorize a borrowing of $2,865,000, which would be strictly for chap, land currently in chapter 61A. Right, which is options one and two. The only, I only, bottom line is, we have to get an authorization for the full value. Don't look at the net amount. I mean, this is the net amount after we do that pay down over a four-year period? The bottom line is, we still have to seek an authorization, or a direct appropriation of $2.8 million.
Okay. Well, personally, I would rather see article, the second article on as a placeholder, especially the time of year and the timeframe, so I, I mean, if no one else has any comments, we'll... Mr. Holstrom?
I guess I would ask, through you to town council, what their recommendation would be regarding the second, the second article? To place it on the warrant because of the questions, or to leave it off and just keep the warrant closed?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Holstrom. By placing it on the warrant, you keep your options open. Now, I understand the concerns, I very, very well understand the concerns about putting it on. It really comes down to, do you want to keep that option available for discussion come November 15th? Or do you wish just to go with the, with the 61A provision? It really comes down to whether you feel you want to have all your options available to you at that time.
Mr. Simonian?
Currently, what's been presented to us by Mr. Kasnovich to address is only the 61A. And I think that, it's my opinion, again, that the warrant should reflect, I think if we start getting into the other article, we're not necessarily going to be asking for an appropriation for that, and I think it could muddy the water to a degree, possibly confusion for town meeting as to what we're actually doing here. And, you know, I've read through the purchase and sale, and I, we've talked about the 61A land pretty prominently throughout the course of the last few weeks, and I think that we should stick to that.
Okay. Is there anything else? Mr. Carpenter?
I'm going to echo Stephen to the extent that also, in the guidance that we, we got, that outside of the 61A land, there's, there's the potential for another process, another chapter of mass general laws. So the timeframe and the requirements that that places upon the town is going to cause difficulty, no matter what we do. To me, I agree, it muddies the water. We have been presenting all along that it's 50 acres, it's 61A lands, and I think that's what we should stick with.
Okay. Is there anything else? So the motion is still, the warrant...
Madam Chair, I would, I feel compelled to speak on this. Clearly, there's a difference of opinion in accordance with the notice of intent by the seller and the town's interpretation. I would agree with Attorney Henningin that we have to keep our options open. And I think that's why it was recommended that we keep these articles separate, because we would be seeking two separate authorizations. By authorizing it, that doesn't mean you have to go out and borrow it. But it is alive, and it would be there if needed. If not there, it could, it could create a number of problems. But it's a placeholder, it would give the town two weeks to decide whether or not, it would maybe make a recommendation to postpone the article indefinitely. If it does come into play, then the authorization could be granted. That authorization could sit out there, and until such time, the town decides to exercise that option or not. If not, it could rescind that authorization in a future town meeting date.
Mr. Simonian?
There's, there's a potential for it to go...
Further?
To have an issue either way, and, and we discussed that, and, and we discussed some of the ramifications prior to this. So we're all well aware, and I, I stated my reasons prior to this, so, you know, I, again, think that we could be treading in a place not worth its while.
Is there anything else? All those in favor of not reopening the warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So it's three to two, it passes. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.[1773.33][1773.33](MUSIC)